I think I'm going to call the Select Board meeting to order for Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under thy command, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Anybody for public comment and announcements?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Chief of Police, I just wanted to stop by tonight and give you a quick rundown of what transpired at the tech school this morning. I don't know if you have heard. So there was approximately eight-thirty this morning, there was an armed intruder alarm that was triggered at the tech school. Our SRO, our School Resource Officer, John Larvey, was in the building at the time when it was triggered. He immediately responded to the location of the alarm. At the same time, the building was being evacuated. At the same time, multiple Howard's Police units were responding. We were assisted by Brewster PD, Chatham PD, State Police Yarmouth, and Howard's Fire. I would say probably within the first five minutes, the initial determination was that it was a false activation. However, the response continued, and out of an abundance of caution, we decided to clear the entire building, in other words, check every classroom. So that's what was accomplished with the assistance of some of the other officers from adjoining towns. After the building was cleared, teachers and staff and students were allowed back into the building, and then the decision was made to dismiss for the day. So the positive notes of this were all the officers involved responded immediately. They were on scene within minutes, and everybody acted extremely professional and calm throughout the whole incident. And, you know, definitely have noticed that all of the teachers, administrative staff, and students of the tech school remained calm, acted completely appropriate to the incident, and we really want to thank them for that and for their cooperation and their appropriate reaction. The investigation is really just in the early stages as to how and why the alarm got triggered, and the administration at the tech school is handling that side of things. So, you know, just to recap, everybody acted appropriately. At no time was there any indication that this was anything other than a false activation, and everybody did their job. There were no real major incidents involved in it, so we're thankful for that, and we're thankful for everybody's cooperation and professionalism.
Thank you, Chief. And then, I mean, when they find out what happened, will you give us an update?
Yes, I certainly can.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment and announcements?
Good evening, members of the board. As you know, we had our annual pole plunge this past Saturday. For those that were there or have seen coverage of it and pictures of it, can truly see what a community event this is, and that's our goal. It was to see the smiles and to see everybody just have a carefree, enjoyable couple hours. It was amazing. Proud to say we've, as of tonight, fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars have been raised. Truly has exceeded our goals from where we started, and I just see this getting bigger and bigger, which is great. So we've got a lot of questions this week about, you know, what's the law enforcement torch run? How did this all come about? So the law enforcement torch run is a group of police officers from all over the world that volunteer their time and dedicate their time and efforts to one thing, to raise money for Special Olympics athletes. That's all they do. And it's a worldwide event. And as of our conference last year, this started in nineteen eighty-four. The group that has donated money and raised the funds and has helped out with this has raised over one billion dollars since nineteen eighty-four. So this fifty-one-five goes right to that, you know, kitty of money, just, you know, it stays in Massachusetts, but just the impact it has worldwide for athletes of Special Olympics is just amazing. And I just want to thank everybody who had any part of it, the plungers, the town, the spectators. I think we actually had more spectators than we did plungers. But everybody that was there and helped us out and got this thing off the ground, we just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Great job.
Anybody else for public comment and announcements?
Hey, hi. Good evening. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. One is a question, then an announcement. So back in February, I submitted to the board the question whether or not a non-binary question about a pool facility could be placed on the ballot. I haven't heard anything or know the follow-up or what to do to continue that discussion.
We're going to be going over all the articles and the pool.
This is not an article issue. I know this is on the warrant. I'm talking about the May twenty-first town ballot question.
Oh, the ballot, excuse me. I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Yeah, okay. So let me know. That's just a question. But to follow up now with respect to the warrant, I am holding open public forum discussion and information sessions on the five citizens petitions that are on the ballot, and they will be held at the two oh four Cultural Center in the library upstairs, Tuesday, April second, at ten a.m., Thursday, April eighteenth, at four p.m., and then the last one, Sunday, April twenty-eighth, at one p.m. So that's, again, an open public forum discussion and information on the five citizens petitions that will be on the warrant. So, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comments and announcements? I can't even talk announcements. Okay, hearing nobody. Jeff, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Also approve the Select Board meeting minutes for March four, two thousand twenty-four, as well as the Select Board meeting minutes for March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. And I also move that we designate Jennifer Harrington as the two thousand twenty-four Inspector of Amels.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
I have a few changes. If it's acceptable with the board, they're small. One of them is February twenty-sixth meeting minutes, change arc to hark. They left the H out. March fourth, I only wrote it as a note, the minutes reflect four-three-two-dash-one. I think we should speak more clearly so staff knows we're talking about four-dash-three-dash-one. So when they do the minutes, the dashes are in there for future. March eleventh, they did, they just spelt my last name wrong, so quick change. And then March eleventh, again, we'd like to, I'd like to offer changing the minutes related to require a public hearing right after that, and that was for the purpose of allowing more than one mooring service agent. So it talks about having a, having a meeting with the Waterways Committee, and it's, and it references public hearing, but doesn't say why. So I'll send those changes to staff. So as long as that's acceptable to the board, I would vote the minutes.
You want to wait for that one, or?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I just note that I'd like to see the final copy, so it does have his changes in.
Yep. We'll put them back and distribute.
Just to be seen.
Right. So new business.
I move that we approve a special permit application for a one-day entertainment for Cape Farm Supply, sixteen oh one Factory Road. Event to be held June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, three p.m. to eleven p.m. at the farm, fifteen ninety Factory Road, with live recorded music with amplification.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve a fee waiver request from the Harwich Garden Club for a plant sale on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at Dome Park.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
Just point out I'm going to vote in favor of this one.
Oh, it's shocking.
The Garden Club, it's in Dome Park, costs nothing to set up, and just their reference to the fifty planters and the eighteen gardens, that's for the entire town. So there was no cleanup costs or anything else. So I will vote in favor of this one.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this one we are removing.
Right.
Item C from the agenda. I move that we approve the committee recommendations from the Select Board Interview Committee. James R. Ferry, Bike Ways Committee, full member, term to expire six-thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Frank Wyasek Jr., Capital Outlay Committee, Select Board Appointment, full member, term to expire six-thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve a request to relinquish fish shanty license agreement. Eric Hessie.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the Designer Selection Committee for the Great Sand Lake's Sewer Design.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, discussion?
I move that we have a discussion.
It's always good.
Discussion and possible vote about a one-day event, River Herring Harvest Celebration. So I will look to Michael to talk about this.
Thank you for putting this on. This is a request of the board to reopen this topic and allow me to speak with Brad Chase from the state, whom I believe we all got an email for, to discuss having a one-day herring celebration. We had previously voted no. It was wrapped up in opening the herring runs again. This is not that. This would be for a one-day celebration. And I would come back to the board with more details and a date for final approval if I can put the people together to do so. But we've had a lot of interest.
Thank you, Michael.
I.
Yep, go ahead.
In anticipation that there will be something coming back, wouldn't you need a motion for reconsideration that would allow that to happen?
We did not vote on it last time.
Well, we didn't open the run. That was a final action.
We could take one that's, I would agree with the Chair that we didn't actually vote no. We just by consensus decided not to. So I would do it either way, whatever you choose.
All right, as long as the Chair is willing to agenda at the next meeting.
Sure, sure, Don.
Madam Chair, member of the board, Director Natural Resources here in Sanaa, Harwich. I just wanted to say thank you for putting this together as well. I look forward to seeing what the details will unfold, along with Brad Chase and myself and.
Right. I was going to make that same comment, is that, you know, the discussion, Michael, we're not even, I don't even know that this takes a vote in the sense that we're giving him direction to go have the conversation, bring it back to the board, see what that entails. But in our discussion, it was to not involve your department or Conservation or anything. So.
Sure.
When he comes, when Michael comes back with the information, then we would take an action.
Great. Look forward to that.
Don?
Yeah, but I do want to impress everybody involved. I know I've talked about this with Mr. McCaskill. The herring aren't going to wait for us. So, I mean, this has some urgency outside of our own control, so I'm hoping that this comes back really soon.
Sure. And this, just to clarify, this is not to do with the opening of the harvest for this year at all. This is just for the one-day celebration.
Exactly.
But it's still going to be around.
We would have to wait for the fish for there to be the celebration, so.
Yes.
[laughing].
Rumor is there's some fish here already, so I just hope we're not too late to the end.
Oh, we're definitely not too late. I just, we cleaned the runs all day today with the Horror Conservation Trust volunteers and several other members, so.
Excellent. I would just say thank you for opening this on this. I did get a call after our meeting, so I couldn't mention it, but the state is looking to do a big event for Earth Day, and this is one that they're considering, sending dignitaries down and making a big deal out of it, so.
Great. Look forward to that discussion.
Right, so we'll need more details and know that we have enough time to prep because obviously it wasn't going to involve staff.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks so much.
Annual Town Meeting, two thousand twenty-four Annual Town Meeting, Cape Cod Regional Technical School District Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-five Budget Presentation.
So, Madam Chair, just before your meeting began, Mr. Samborn reached out. He's on his way. He is, he's detained unavoidably with a parent-student conference. He'll be as soon as he can. I told him we could host him when he arrives. I do know that Mr. McMillan is here, and we could move on to item B related to a possible debt exclusion, if that's acceptable to the board.
Perfect, yeah. That's great. Hi, Michael.
Good evening. Slideboard, I'm just not used to standing here. It looks different. Good evening, Slideboard. I do have some slides. Do you have them?
Matt, do you have them?
But I can start, get started. So this is about, is there actually in the corner? So this is for the middle school siding and trim replacement. We did mention it when we were here talking about our budget, and this is to provide you a bit more detail.
And board members, you do have this in your packet. It follows on the material that Cape Cod Tech provided.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for that. Okay, so the issue we have at the moment is that the middle school, the siding and trim is in a significant, a state of significant disrepair. That is allowing water, we believe, and animals to get into the, to the, you know, the structure of the building, water infiltration. It seems to be affecting water, the air quality inside the building. And we have been doing, we have been doing some ad hoc repairs as we go, but that's, you know, they're of limited value because it's not the whole building. So you're not sealing the building, you're just patching it. And so they're deteriorating faster, and it's less cost-effective. So I included just a bunch of photographs. It's kind of hard to see from that distance. I did include a couple of bigger photos. So you can just see on the left, you can see that some of the siding has already, is coming away here. There's a hole even through to the wrap on the building. And on the right, you can see how bad the trim is there. I mean, that's, you know, a huge hole. It needs to be repaired. So, you know, when we were putting the budget together, you know, so I was putting the budget together, and I was preparing a figure for just repairs. And it struck me that the repairs, doing the annual repairs would be as much as a payment on debt if we did the whole building at once, which would be much more effective and much better for the building. So what we would like to do is remove all that existing siding and trim and, you know, put much better, high-quality wrap around the building and replace and install, you know, weather-resistant siding and trim. So we've had an initial estimate of the cost, you know, ballpark figure. We believe it would be around two and a half million dollars. How we would finance that, so we would borrow the funds to do it, then it would be, that cost would then be assessed to the town as part of the usual assessment. And so the figure we actually did include in the budget and a figure which would either be used for repairs or to pay a debt, I mean, it's in the debt category on your assessment. So it's already part of the budget. So this is not any additional funds for this, the town, because it's already been included. It was, it was, and it would be ongoing based, assessed to you based on the foundation enrollment. So this year, that was seventy-six point eight percent for Harwich and, you know, twenty-three point two for Chatham. And each year, that would be updated as the foundational numbers changed. That's the financing we'd planned to do over twenty years, depending on what rates were like moving out to do the debt. So I'm going real quick. Anybody who's got any questions, feel free to ask.
Don?
It's just, I'm just putting it out there. Generally, you have a bond that times out with the usable timeframe for the building itself. So you are expecting, just to get it on the record, that you're expecting the building to be there for the twenty-year period.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, so the middle school building is a great building. We like it. It's fit for purpose. It does what we need to do. We did not envisage replacing that building.
I just didn't want to let the moment go by without pointing that out.
Yeah, and we believe the value, you know, these materials last twenty years. So that's how we believe you can justify paying, having a loan of that length of time. And so the process for the construction, you know, we'd hope to get the approval, and I will go into that in a bit more detail because it's a little funky, but we hope to get the approval between now and town meeting. Then we would actually, I think actually what we would do is, I put the issue of debt here. We may actually issue the debt after procurement. So we would do the design during the summer and into the fall. Hopefully, we'd be able to get out and do the procurement to find construction towards the end of this calendar year, and so we can begin construction in the second half of two thousand twenty-five, and I'm sure possibly into two thousand twenty-six. And then, so we would probably end up issuing the debt after the procurement. You know, I spoke to our bill and council today, and his advice was, yeah, you probably want to wait until you actually know what your construction total is going to be before you go ahead with issuing all that debt. So I mentioned that the approval process for this is a little, there's a little nuance because technically, once school committee has approved it under NGL and the Mass General Law, we don't need, the Select Board doesn't have to approve it, they just have to not have disproved it. So within sixty days, we will notify you after the school committee has voted. If you wanted to disapprove it, you'd have to have a vote at town meeting to disapprove it. Otherwise, it's considered approved, and the district can go ahead and issue the debt. We didn't really want to put you in that position. So, you know, we wanted to make sure you were on board with this before we did it. So providing you're in support, then we'd have the school committee vote at the next meeting. So then the town meeting within sixty days as well. So it just doesn't, it's not just about running out of time. And we would also recommend, so you do have the option of not putting it on the town meeting, but we would recommend doing that just because we want to be fully transparent. You know, this is a big, you know, take-on for the district. We want everybody to be aware of what's happening, get that, and get everybody in support of it. So we would recommend that article for town meeting. And there is, the other part of it is whether or not you exclude this from Proposition Two and a Half. Really, that's your decision. You don't, it doesn't have to be excluded from Proposition Two and a Half. So the, and the town meeting doesn't actually decide that, is my understanding, but that's, but you can make the town meeting vote conditional on the decision to exclude it from Proposition Two and a Half, if you want to go that way. Or you can just have a straight vote to approve the debt, and then you can decide as Slideboard how to handle it going forward. Does that all make sense? All right, good. Yep, so that's it. That's the, an overview of the project and what we're proposing.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for being here and giving us more to spend.
Thank you very much.
Has there been any other projects for the future that are sizable, that you can see coming down the pipeline in the next five to seven years for this specific building?
Yes. So we are also looking, yeah, we are also looking at the roof. So, and that is, that is also included in the budget. So it's a, we've included a number in there to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to take part of their grant program. So there's, there's a question about the timing of those two projects, like, would you do the, you know, in a perfect world, we might do the roof first, right? Get the roof done and then do the siding. That being said, the roof's actually in pretty decent shape. I mean, we do have occasional leaks, but it's a huge roof, and it's, you know, it's a good number of years old. So we're comfortable waiting a few more years if it takes that long to go onto the MSBA's grant program, because we don't want to do without that money. As you saw from those pictures, I'm not so comfortable leaving the siding and trim for the next few years. We have to keep, we have to do those repairs, or it's going to start to impact the environment, the structure and the environment of the building. So that's why I think we should get the siding and the trim done now, and we'll just get the roof done as soon as we, you know, in the next few years, hopefully as well. But I am very mindful of the impact on your costs. It's within the assessment. We do have, the debt on the high school roof has coming down. The payments come down about fifty thousand dollars a year. So this is kind of part of rolling that money, that debt off and using it for other projects. I mean, it's not as highly an increase. I do think we have to start increasing our investment in these buildings because they are getting a bit older. And if we don't do that now, then we will have much bigger bills down the road. That's my view.
Thank you for the answer. And do you see, other than the roof, do you see any other?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, so the short answer is yes. There are always going to be projects. So we will, at some point, need to start looking at replacing the boilers. Actually, it's the Harwich Elementary School Boiler, which will be the next capital project in that area. So we're going to do one or two at Harwich, and then we'll be doing some at the middle school. I mean, the age of these buildings, like, I'm just going to be here every year. I think we're going to be looking at, well, not quite every year, but, you know, regular basis, we're going to be looking at doing these projects. We do have a plan. I should have brought it. I'd be happy to come back and give you the whole plan, which breaks this down, you know, year by year.
I would, for one, would love to see that.
I think it'd be great.
I think that would be great. And appreciate you doing all the work to put that grid together.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. We've got it already. Just a, you know, these things, they always change. So, you know, but this is our plan as it is for the next five, ten years. And then, you know, things move up and down in priority. Like, the siding was on our list, but it wasn't near the top last year. But then, you know, it's just got so bad, you know, you saw those pictures. And we're just concerned, you know, within the building, air quality is a problem. So we're having to move classrooms around because air quality. We think this is part of the solution. So, yeah, ongoing.
Yeah, it'd be great for.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Michael, did you have any questions?
I'd support it. I'd hate to see history repeat itself and not maintain things so that we have to tear them down and rebuild them.
I totally agree.
Elementary school you mentioned?
Yep.
That is not part of the assessment, though, correct? That's a hundred percent Harwich.
I mean, it is part, yeah, I mean, yes and no. So it is part of the assessment, but the way it's assessed is a hundred percent to you. So, yeah, so when you get the number, that includes a hundred percent of the capital cost for that building.
And just a comment, we really do need to move forward on the assessment and the way it's done. And I think this is something now we've talked about for a couple of years. And as we look at their capital plan, I'm sure it will horrify us all. And we're over seventy percent now. So it's time to make a move and either agree with Chatham that the funding formula wasn't anticipated to be what it is when we regionalized. But it's only getting worse at this point. Two and a half million, new roof, I can only imagine. Boilers, we know what those cost. So I think we need to get going with Chatham to try and figure this out. And if we can't with Chatham, then we need to go to the state and figure it out.
Right. And we talked about the fact that, you know, we were going to start having those conversations over the course of the next several months. So I think we need to open up that dialogue further. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will point out that historically, we make that same statement. When we start talking about the next several months, it always winds up being the fall, and then we wind up being in the budget season. I would urge us, as soon as town meeting's over, to start having a discussion right away.
That's the intention, and that was exactly why we're trying to get through town meeting and then have that conversation. And, and Michael, I just had a question. When you put it to the design and, you know, that's going to happen over the summer, and that's already included as well in that figure?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the total cost.
Yeah. And you'll be looking at materials that are more longer with standing, like, A-Z or something?
Yeah, right now, yeah, exactly.
Okay, okay. Well, I support it as well. So you need us to, to take, you, do you want us to take action? Because you're not taking.
Yeah, so we would like you to take action, to approve it.
Okay.
So if you didn't want to, you would have to vote to disapprove it.
Yeah, okay.
But you need to take an act of vote to disapprove it. But if you want it, we would suggest you take a vote to approve it.
Joe?
And I would ask, based on the discussion that we're having relative to the two thousand twenty-four Annual Town Meeting, if the board is supportive of this, you've heard Mr. McMillan referred to an article.
Right.
The article itself on the approving of the project is very straightforward. However, the question of if we're going to do a debt exclusion is a little bit more involved and intricate and requires bond counsel. And that is something that, given the timeframes we're under, we would need direction from the board tonight on the question of a debt exclusion. Now, I believe while we're having this conversation, our counterparts in Chatham are having the same conversation. They're looking to simply add an article to their warrant. They're not looking to use a debt exclusion to pay.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we're at, and certainly what I would need for direction from the board.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a motion?
Happy to make a motion. I'm just a little confused on if it's a debt exclusion motion?
No, because Chatham is looking to make a simple article, not a debt.
Yeah, so Chatham.
To move forward.
Forward at the town meeting.
But we're going to need a debt exclusion.
That's why I'm confused.
I guess that's, I guess there's two questions. One is if you approve, well, there's three. One is if you approve it.
Yeah.
Two is if you want a debt exclusion, and the third is if you want to make the article dependent upon the debt exclusion.
Right.
It sounds like you don't want to make it dependent, but you don't have to. So you can, so what Chatham did is they just voted to approve the district taking on this debt.
That, yeah, that's what I meant, was a simple vote.
And you can, yeah, and you can, as a Select Board, decide now or later or any point whether or not it should be excluded from your Proposition Two and a Half.
So just two things. What is the exact amount? Because, Joe, I can't find it in my packet. I've been known to lose. Because, Joe, I can't find it in my packet. I've been known to lose things in there in the past, but I don't think it's there. I went through it a few times.
Yeah, I don't think it is in here.
Can you use an estimated cost as placeholder?
Well, I can't.
So you say two point two?
Two point five million dollars.
Five million.
All right, so I would ask that if the board could be, shared the information that's not in the packet and you can share the capital plan that you have.
Yes.
Via email.
Yep.
And I would make the motion to, make a motion that we vote to create an article for the Monomoy Regional Middle School siding project. Estimated amount, two point five million, and then make it contingent on a debt exclusion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Joe?
If, if I could, the project that you're speaking with tonight is the two million number?
Two point five, yes, two point five.
And so you've said that with, because you do have in your packets a draft budget article for Harwich's assessment for the Monomoy Regional School District. And in that draft article presently is the full amount that was confirmed by memorandum that we've shared with you folks. I think you have that as part of your ads that, tonight from staff. There is a debt line of one million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. So I believe I heard you say that the Harwich assessment includes the fiscal year twenty-five payment for that project, correct?
That's correct.
And so later on, you're going to have a conversation about our, the town of Harwich's fiscal year two thousand twenty-five capital outlay budget and articles. So you have a placeholder that has a hundred twenty thousand dollars for the Harwich Elementary School as a raise and appropriate. You've told me that, or I think you've told the board that that's already under the capital line.
Yep.
In your operating budget assessment article, correct?
Yes.
All right. So then, the motion before you is to, one, create an article, that's again straightforward, but that you do want a contingent upon a debt exclusion override. So then we would have to work with bond counsel to create that ballot question and get it to you as quickly as possible, if that was the intent.
And then I would just say, so we do have a motion and a second, right?
Yeah.
We do.
Okay, and then, Joe, if I'm hearing you correctly, then when we get to Monomoy's budget,
That's what I said.
we would be taking out one point five million. Is that correct? Because is one point five million built in as our assessment on the siding?
No.
Okay.
So I believe the numbers, so I, the numbers Mr. Powers is referring to, that's the, that's that includes the debt on the high school. So those figures, and this is how it will be assessed you every year as, as part of the assessment. So we give you that total assessment figure, that includes debt payments.
But not the, not the siding?
It does include an estimate of debt payments on the siding, yes.
That was in, that was in the budget. Nothing's changing. The number's not changing. So the information he's giving us tonight is simply to say that it's, it's being pulled out for this purpose.
Yep.
Then if we want to do a debt exclusion, we can. We don't have to.
Yeah, and the debt exclusion.
Chatham is, doesn't sound like Chatham's doing that. So if we want it to be clean and the same, we would not do a debt exclusion, correct?
And so whether or not it's a debt exclusion does not impact the assessment.
Right. It's, it is what it is.
It is what it is.
To the town administrator.
I, I do think it does impact your motion vote tonight, and I think we would want to question the gentleman at the podium.
Right, meaning, go ahead.
Yeah, the district doesn't require it.
Right.
So now it's a specific question for the town of Harwich.
Exactly, right. And I was only pointing out that my understanding from what Michael said was that Chatham was not moving forward with a debt exclusion.
That, that was my statement.
Condition, yeah.
Yeah, depending on if anything changed tonight. So, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make two observations. The first one is that, yeah, Chatham may not be considering that, but they're only footing about twenty-five percent of it. So our number is much larger. And second of all, I'm not sure I want to establish a practice where I spend on capital projects out of our operating budget, you know, as an assessment.
So you.
I'd like to be able to identify it as a thing so that the public sees what we're doing. And I can think of sixty million reasons why they'd want to do it, because the high school was that. Michael's right. The argument is, keep maintaining it and we won't have to go out and, you know, buy a new building.
Absolutely. Just to be clear, the high school debt is part of your assessment every year. And so this is just a different, you know, this is debt for a different project, but it would still be part of your assessment.
And I'm advocating it should be identified as such separately so everybody knows that that's what we're doing.
Yes, it is.
And I'm comfortable with my motion. I guess my question now, maybe through the town administrator, is if town meeting doesn't pass the article or doesn't pass the ballot, what happens to the money that's built in the assessment for this year?
So we would use that for repairs.
So we're voting that out of money regardless?
Well, so the assessment set, and the assessment's based on estimates. So if we did not, it would, to be honest, we would probably not be able to spend it and it would flow through to excess and deficiency and be able to use to offset future budgets. However, we would also know that we would have a, a challenge in, we'd have to do repairs to the outside of the building, so.
And then if I may, one more. What is, because it's an all-inclusive number, what is the debt anticipation on this project for the two and a half million that's built into our assessment? What's that number?
What, for this year or every year?
What's built into your operating budget?
So it's not in our operating budget, just to be clear. It's part, I think the way it works is technically part of your operating budget because the way assessment is assessed to you.
I'll say it the other way. What's in our assessment?
Yeah.
Specific to this.
This year.
Kathleen, you can actually take this.
If you give me two seconds, I can find it. I just, oh no, there you go. Yes.
About four percent.
Yes, but don't calculate, don't calculate your assessment because that.
So folks, I don't think everyone can hear. I know I can't.
So I just don't want to, like, we're doing fast math. So I wasn't sure if the, the new debt was incorporated in the assessment. I thought it was separate. So I accounted for it separate in my latest adjustment, so it was about a hundred thousand dollars, which is our percent of the overall. But, you know, given that it's not a formal debt schedule that we would normally get from Hilltop, we don't like to ballpark numbers, but it gives you a general idea of what the, the amount is. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, that sounds about right. I'm just, I do have the number. I don't have to guess. I just need to find it, but yeah.
Okay.
Approximate is fine with me, and hearing you say that if town meeting and the ballot doesn't pass, you're not doing the project.
Yeah, I, the, the, no, we would not do the debt. We would not replace the siding.
And then I can ask you for the money back in excess and deficiency next year?
Yes, we have used eight hundred thousand dollars of excess and deficiency to justify.
Thank you. And I didn't even bring that up this year.
I know, I was waiting, I was ready for it.
Through you to the town administrator, are you comfortable with the motion?
So I'm, I'm clear on the motion and the follow-up actions. I'm still not clear on the article that we use to fund our assessment costs. Again, which is in your draft warrant. Within that, we talk about the Harwich assessment for fiscal year twenty-five being twenty-nine million, eight hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. A portion of which, one million, five hundred fifty-one dollars, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars, excuse me, one million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars is related to debt. In the budget presentation that this district made to you folks on February twenty-eighth, there is a capital and debt plans slide. The capital talks about the hundred twenty thousand for the elementary school roof, which is great later on in our discussion on capital. It talks about items related to the middle school, but under debt, the total debt, district debt service, if I'm reading this correctly, is two million, nineteen thousand, six hundred twenty-four. That refers to the Monomoy Regional High School, construction loan principal, the Monomoy Regional High School interest payment, and first payment on middle school siding, which was two hundred fifty thousand.
So which includes your share and Chatham's share?
Just want to make sure I'm reading from the right side.
Yeah.
This is everything for the district, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So then to the members' questions, one would assume that the two hundred fifty thousand earmarked in the debt table is going to be seventy-six point two-three percent, I believe, for Harwich.
Yeah, seventy-six percent of.
Yes, exactly, yes.
And that's all baked in to our draft article.
That is exactly.
Right.
Seventy-six point two-three percent of the two hundred and fifty thousand that was just mentioned, which is more than a hundred thousand.
That would be principal and interest.
Kathleen, I'm just going to invite you to sit up here with us because then we have our whole annual town meeting discussion anyway, so everybody can hear.
So if I may, then to the members' question, yes, I, I understand now completely. The motion that you folks are about to vote on is very clear, and it's to create an article which is essentially done. But we're going to add the contingency language for the debt exclusion and we're going to rely upon bond counsel to help frame the debt exclusion question. So when you do have the annual town election warrant for May twenty-first, you already have that.
Thank you, Joe. Michael?
Sorry, I keep going back to this, but I want my notes to be clear.
Yeah.
What is the number built into that capital number for this project, the seventy-six point two-three percent? And approximately, I feel like we just used a hundred thousand and quickly figured out it can't be a hundred thousand.
So, yeah, so bear with me for two seconds.
Thank you.
While he's looking for that, I just want to point out that you still need this motion because the methodology is completely different. The, and the other, and the alternative just gets baked into a budget where, year by year by year by year, you're paying off something that you haven't really identified as something that you're going to borrow against as a capital improvement.
No, I, I agree. I just want for my notes, him to go on the record and say what our payment is going to be for this project so the public knows.
Okay, that's kind of why I want to see the exclusion too, so the public knows.
I, um, I just, never mind.
All right, sorry about that. That's okay.
It's a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Seventy-six percent of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Ish.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seventy-six point eight.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, so we have.
That's not our total obligation. That's only this year's version.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Ish.
I wish, yeah, I wish that was it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in, any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Joe?
I just, just to clarify, we are already, like, moving forward with all our borrowings. And we've already been working with bond counsel and we've gotten all of our debt documentation put forward, to move forward. I don't know that we would be able to introduce this debt and get it approved for a May to June borrowing for, for that, just because it's kind of a late introduction.
So.
I just don't know, like, if you'd be able to.
So we, you don't borrow the debt?
Right, but I mean, for us to kind of still be party, we're still party to it and have to sign off, right?
So the district is, unless the school commit, unless the, we will, we notify, I mean, obviously we wouldn't, but we notify the select board that we are planning to go ahead with this. Unless they disapprove it, we are approved to go ahead and issue the debt.
Oh, so you've already gone through your process?
We have not gone through the process yet. We will do that, providing we get approval from the select boards. We would issue the debt and we wouldn't be doing that until, on our timeline, like, the fall.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because we want to do the design first, get in a sense, I get, do the design and then do the procurement to get the, a sense of how much it's actually going to cost before we issue the debt. But, but your approval and town meeting's approval gives us the go-ahead to do all that work. If you, if nobody wants to, you know, if the motion here is not to do that work, we would not project a,
Right.
progress at this point.
Right.
And we'd come back and try and make the case to you stronger later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
And for clarity, the debt exclusion, as long as it passes a town meeting, doesn't have any issue for you, just for the public to understand?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion before I go to a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Okay, go back to Bob. You're welcome to sit at the table if you'd prefer. It's totally up to you. Let's all have a seat.
Thank you.
Pull your mic over a little.
Pardon me?
Just pull your mic over.
Good. Hear me? Okay. All right, oh, thank you. So let's make sure this works. How's this work? There we go. Okay. Goes backwards. Doesn't go backwards. Oh, there we go. Little delay. All right. Thank you for facilitating, being able to finish the parent meeting out in the parking lot on my phone. Maybe I should start by saying what happened today at Cape Cod Tech, just so.
We had an update from our police.
You did?
Yeah, the police chief.
Phil Matt gave us an update.
You don't need that.
No.
Okay, very good. And I want to thank the Harwich Police Department with their swift response to the, to the situation as well as our staff. And it's just kind of a jarring day for the, for the students and the staff. So, so I'm here to present the FY twenty-five budget. And this is work that started in, in, in April with our, with our staff and our department heads and my business manager, Aaron Orcutt, who is the author of a lot of the things I'm presenting here tonight. So it starts in our finance subcommittee with Anthony Thuleo and Norm Micho and Steph Galazzi, who sit on that subcommittee, and that work goes through, I think, February in the school committee. And I'm joined by John Auer and Bob Furtado, who represent the town of Harwich at Cape Cod Tech. The school committee will approve the budget this, next Thursday. So I want to thank them for all their hard work. So a little bit on enrollment. You see that we're pretty status quo as far as enrollment. We're down two students overall. But with, with Harwich, we're up seven, so, which is a good percentage increase for the town of Harwich. So we love having more kids from Harwich, but obviously that has fiscal, fiscal impact. Okay, I think there's a little delay here. Did I go? So a little bit more, Barnstable and Yarmouth pretty much make up about half of our overall enrollment. And you see Harwich is pretty much next at eleven and a half percent of our overall enrollment. There we go. History of enrollment. You know, back in FY twenty, we were just getting into a new building. We were at a low for enrollment of five hundred and seventy students. I'm happy to say that now the building, it was built for six hundred and fifty students. We have six hundred and sixty-two. We're up ninety students over these several years. And we have a considerable waiting list. And it's been, it's been for the last three or four years now that we've had a waiting list and it's growing every year. Actually, the early indications are that we have four hundred and fifty-seven applications for a hundred and eighty-six spots. And that's why we're looking at three seventy-four Main Street. As you know, we're in an interminable agreement, or lease with the town. We're really excited about the fundraising we're undertaking right now and developing a master plan for that property, which would hopefully, in FY twenty-five, start two new programs over there. Sorry, not FY twenty-five, September of twenty-five, which would be fiscal twenty-six. So nothing in this budget pertains to the, to the farm property. So I'm presenting a four point three-eight percent budget. And, which is, I think you'll look at over the last several years since FY nineteen, I think we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money. But inflation, the Esser Cliff, and also the fact that those ninety additional students are starting to, to take hold and the fiscal impact of that, also wage inflation is also, is starting to impact our budget. But I think those things taken into effect represent this four point three-eight percent. So where does it come from? I'm fond of saying that Chapter Seventy doesn't usually make it over the bridge. And it's, we, the Student Opportunity Act has kicked in a little bit of state aid. If you, on the next slide, I'm going to, I'm going to go to the next slide. It's hard to see here, but the red is the state. to see here, but the red is the state aid, and there was a bit of a bump from the Student Opportunity Act that we received, primarily because we have a large proportion of students that are high needs or economically disadvantaged. But still, the bulk of assessment, bulk of funding this budget is from the twelve towns and the assessments that are undertaken. So I did want to give a little history of our operating budget, and I would like to call attention to the, to the column that says assessments, because one thing I think we've been doing, and I think Joe could attest to this, that over the last several years, you will see ups and downs in the assessments in that column. And for instance, in twenty-one, we revoted our budget because of COVID, and we brought it down, and you see our assessments went down from four, twelve million four, down to twelve million one, and you also see a decrease in nineteen to twenty. That's a combination, that's also us giving back money to the towns because we've exceeded excess and deficiency, the five percent, and when we get audited, and it's proven that we are over the five percent, we are obligated to give that money back. Also, we earned a considerable amount of interest on the monies that we had in MSBA funds at one point, and we gave that interest back, so that's why it's been an up and down in the assessment column there, but trying to help out whenever possible. Oh, one other thing on the revenue, we are considering, we are contributing, I believe, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of excess and deficiency in this budget, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand of local revenue is, the bulk of that is the excess and deficiency. We also make some money renting our parking lot to the bus company, and we also, little interest income as well. The second most important people in our building are our teachers, they account thirty-five percent of the overall budget. Salaries and benefits, as you know, it's over seventy-six percent of the entire budget. You know that Cape Cod Municipal Health Group came in at eight percent this year. We did get some good news for Barnstable County Assessment, where we had a decrease, it was a pretty good decrease, so that helped us to bring us down. Now, this, this was over five percent at one point, this budget, so that was some good news late in the budget cycle. One thing I should say, though, which is true with regional schools that you're familiar with, is that over, over seven-hundred thousand dollars sits in this budget for retirees' health insurance alone, for those who no longer work in our facility. So that's a, that's a significant portion of our budget. This is just a table of the same information I just showed you on the last slide. When, when we refer to capital at Cape Cod Tech, which is the last item, we're talking about the new and replacement equipment that we have to purchase on an ongoing basis, our technology, and then we do have a, it's really the last four line items in our line item budget that we presented, or gave to the, to the select board, and that's for building improvement, and we're slowly ramping that up, because even though we're only in year four in the new building, things do start to come up. So, not sizable, but they do start to come up. So the debt, you may remember that we borrowed at three-point-three-two percent, and it's a declining, I think it's level principal declining debt schedule, and we're in year six of that, believe it or not, out of a twenty-year term. And, so for the town of Harwich, the assessment is six-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, that's on the building, okay? And then, the operating assessment is one-million-five-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. Put together, for the town of Harwich, it's two-million-two-hundred-and-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars for both capital and operating. So I mentioned the retiree benefits. One thing we, our subcommittee, our finance subcommittee has got really serious about is OPEB, other post-employment benefits, of which retirees' health insurance is pretty much the big bulk of it. And we, back in two thousand and fifteen, we joined the Plymouth County OPEB Trust, and in this budget, there's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar line item called OPEB Obligation. All that does is go right from this budget to that OPEB Trust, which is invested, and we've had, we've been having returns of about seven percent over the life of the, of the fund so far, and we've now covered fourteen and a third of our unfunded liability for other post-employment benefits. We have a schedule that looks at retiring or fully funding those liabilities in two-thousand-and-thirty-eight, which is also dependent upon Barnstable County Retirement System, also, because we have a line item in the budget for Barnstable County Retirement, and down the road, when that sun sets, when they fully fund their retirement system, which they say is going to be around two-thousand-and-thirty-six, I think, it does change every year after audits, we would take that money and then just move it over to increase the money going to this, okay? The three-hundred thousand will not go up anymore, we've been inching that up, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, according to our plan, and now it's at three-hundred thousand, so it will not increase from there. Okay? And so those are my formal remarks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Questions from board members? Anything? Michael?
I have no questions, thank you. Concisive, to the point as always.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Jeff?
Yeah, no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, was great.
Don?
Well, you know, it's my annual comment.
Yes, yes.
Can't let the opportunity go by without mentioning two words, Jimmy Marsline.
And we're going to, we're going to deal with that when we deal with the three-seventy-four Main Street property.
Excellent. It's still on everyone's mind.
I know.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael?
Well, town administrator had his hand up, so I'll wait my turn.
Just to thank Dr. Sam Born, he's always been a great partner, I want to note that he sent his numbers on January twenty-fifth. Once we knew the sense of the state aid, the number has never wavered, which is always helpful, so we always appreciate what his team does for us as well.
Thank you, Joe.
Likewise, working with Joe has always been a pleasure, always a pleasure.
Thank you. Michael?
Have you been before Finance Committee yet?
We have, yeah.
And I know the question.
Oh, yes.
Out of the budget hearing about what our school resource officer, how he gets paid.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have an answer for that?
I do. I think we came up with a good plan, that Kevin Considine and I will get together and determine a number that seems to work for both parties, and then I think that would go to the finance sub, and that would be incorporated into our FY twenty-six budget. Five-six was thrown around of the salary because of summers, but I think we need to massage that a bit with Kevin and I to just the realities of how it works. Sometimes a school resource officer can't be at the school, they're pulled away, so facilitating situations like that, but I think we'll come to a very equitable solution.
Thank you, I just didn't want to get lost again.
Yes.
With your indulgence, I would ask that we could skip over, we're going to the next topic, but just skip over town operating in Monomoy, and I'd make a motion on Cape Cod Regional Tech while they're here, so they don't have to stay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's great.
So I move that we accept, recommend, and place Article Six, Cape Cod Regional Technical School Budget Assessment for the Town of Harwich in the amount of two-million-two-hundred-and-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four-zero. And that was my only question, because we've talked about the resource officer, but I also want to say that, you know, Michael put in a lot of hard work on the agreement, and we really look forward to that coming to fruition, so it's great news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Next.
So Madam Chair, members of the board, now you get to the heart of the matter, so to speak. Item C under the twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting, and what you have is a list of articles. I do have article numbers that I'm prepared to use, but more importantly, it's what Board Member McCaskill just led you to, that is what we're looking for, for you to accept, recommend, and place various articles. So the first one up would be what is traditionally Article Four, it's the town operating budget. You have it in your packet, and I can walk through that. You can also see that the article is fully formed in that we have the article, the scope of the article, we have the tables that talk about the sources that are used, we have the explanation, and that all ties to a draft Appendix B, which was also included in your packet. Obviously, this is the biggest part of all the budgets that we do, so I'd be ready, willing, and able to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Thank you, Joe. Michael?
Yes, thank you, Joe. I had asked last week when the, or last discussion on this, what the original budget proposal percentage was, and I thought it was either four-point-two percent overall or four-point-five percent. I don't recall getting a, getting an answer, and I, I think, if I'm reading tonight's packet correct, it's eight-point-one percent overall.
The, just the Article Four, or just, or all the raising appropriate?
Article Four.
Article Four is, yeah, the eight percent.
Eight-point-one percent, Kathleen, thank you.
Yeah, and that includes the, it, it doesn't make a difference, but it, just so you're aware, it does include like the new debt service that will come on in twenty-five.
Okay.
But it's all exempt, so it, it's not a net increase in expense.
Okay, and is there a document that's been created to show how we got from the original to the eight-point-one percent, or can one be created? I mean, I know we voted enhancement of services.
Yeah.
I know we've had kind of a moving target on numbers. Is there something that can be created to the board before final vote on approval of where the difference came from? I know we voted some of it, but some was, there was some moving targets in the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can parse out, because the original budget that was entered in EUNIS was, you know, was everything without the enhancements, without the childcare addition, and so that would be your, kind of your, your base number, that everything kind of was built on. We can definitely get that for you.
Okay.
Because we saved it all.
Eight-point-one's a big number. Certainly going to make a headline, and it would be nice to have, and I know and appreciate the town administrator didn't recommend enhancement of services, the board recommended the enhancement of services, but I wouldn't mind having kind of an overall.
Sure.
What brings that up. And, Madam Chair, with that, before we go, I certainly would be willing to make a motion tonight, or entertain a motion on placing, because we're obviously going to place it, I would just want some backup information.
Mm-hmm.
To support it. Kathleen, through you, to you through the chair. It's related to sources. And when we look at sources, it says water retained earnings, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. And then it's mentioned in the body, the use of retained earnings from the water and wastewater departments is solely to account for the indirect cost provided by staff. Maybe it's more appropriate to ask the water commissioners, but why are we using, why is that retained earnings? Why wouldn't that be a budgeted item for them every year? I know it changes, but why do we do it that way?
Sure. No, I definitely want to, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the same exact document that you are, because I certainly kind of give you the facts as a whole, but I just want to.
It's Article Four Town Operating Budget. That's where I'm, that's where I'm starting.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure.
Kathleen?
Joe's handing you something, Kathleen?
Yeah.
Do you have that?
Yes. Technically, it's a, it's not the exact right terminology, we can certainly adjust that, it is not, those two figures are not from retained earnings. Those are the actual, those are the indirect cost transfers, so that, you know, like, I know you're familiar with the calculation, so it is from their overall budget. The majority, I think almost all of the water budget is from user fees, so they have a line item for indirect costs, which is part of their overall budget, which is in turn, is paid for with their user fees. The wastewater is paid for, we've incorporated the indirect costs for tracking purposes, but that will be paid for with the subsidy from the general fund. So we can, like, we can just slightly adjust that terminology to make it a clearer.
So, go ahead.
I would say, I would appreciate that, I think, you know, it's been said, words matter, and, and looking at this, not wanting to use ongoing budget items with free cash, as we would refer to it, I think it's important to show the public that this is something that's planned for and budgeted, not something that's coming out of what they actually end up with at the end of the year.
Sure.
In their terminology, free cash.
No, no, that makes complete sense, yeah, it was, it's just a, and it's funny, I looked more at the numbers than I did at the terms, so I'm sorry, Miss.
So those two will, those two will be revised headings?
Yes. They'll just say water indirect costs.
Okay.
You want me to keep going?
Keep going.
I'm going to take a break.
No, go ahead.
All right. Indirects from wastewater, why zero change going forward this year?
It was a late addition, and we thought it would be, be fair to just maintain the same number. There was, it was kind of a long process to calculate the water indirect, so I thought, rather, you know, to be expedient, you could in theory increase it to an extent, because there is, there's more salary expense associated with it, and more, and of, you know, all the time and expense with the, the new debt service that we're bringing on, but to be fair, because it's, it's kind of a, we pay them, so they pay us, it, it's more for tracking the process as a whole, rather than, you know, being exact in the actual amount.
Okay, thank you. Five-point-four percent increase in department budgets, eight-point-one percent overall, with the five-point-four percent or the eight-one, do we need to talk about whether or not this requires an override?
It does not.
It does not, so we're allowed two-and-a-half percent plus the growth, and we're covered under that number.
Yeah. If you had to exceed the levy limit, if your, if your expenses were far and above all the sources that we had in the levy limit, and all the transfers, then you would have to find another funding source, whatever, you know, that's decided on.
Okay.
We're currently, it's a.
We're under.
We're under, yeah.
So on the second page, under the draft article, page, I believe it to be eighty-nine, but the document's titled FY twenty-five Budget Revenue Sources and Expenses/Uses?
Yes.
One thing I think that would be important for town meeting is, it says Article Four Items Under Expenses.
Yes.
And then at the very bottom, it says subtotal Art Four Expenses. I think we should spell out the word article.
Oh, of course.
Joe, I think to you, and we've done this in the past, a summary of the, the enhancement of services and new positions, a chart for, for town meeting, that was something that we agreed on last year, rather than have separate articles as that debate went on, but are we intending to do a separate memo in the, in the book for, for the warrant for enhancement of services related to positions?
So I, I get hives when I think about a separate memo. What I would rather like to be able to do is rely upon the body of the article, as well as the Appendix B. So I think last year we had it embedded at the end of Appendix B, but I can certainly include that in the explanation on Article Four and in the Appendix B.
It worked in Appendix B last year, so that's fine with me, as long as we have something.
Understood.
To explain those positions, I think that that's important.
Madam Chair, if I could, just to that specific question, before the, before you finalize your discussion on proposed Article Four, that would be some excellent guidance to have from all four of you. As to what sort of language you'd like to have and where.
Yeah, thank you.
I think I'm getting to the end of it, Julie.
Okay.
Wastewater Enterprise Fund Substity. Kathleen, could you just explain again for me and the public? Bottom line, same document I was just referring to, one-point-zero-one-five million, down to five-hundred-and-fifty, fifty thousand, forty-five-point-seven-seven percent decrease.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, but we were actually trying to clean it up, sometimes it makes a mess before you clean it type of thing. So the million fifteen.
Joe, do you want to know?
Fifty.
Where?
Yes, please.
So the same document, we were just talking about Article Four Items, under, second page after the document that has the article, the one with all the detail on it, it's at the bottom, very end, and it says wastewater enterprise fund subsidy.
I don't believe I have that in my packet.
So it's page ninety-two, sorry.
Yeah, it's ninety-two.
Oh, you have a printed packet?
Yeah.
That was my problem.
I mean, I can speak to that as a whole, um, but not, you know, like, uh, because I kind of track it differently. So, that $1,015, uh, was the debt service. It was, um, everything was kind of combined. Um, there was some confusion about out the, you know, the exact amount of the debt service. Uh, so what I did was split it out, so to be more transparent too, to actually see what our debt service is versus what the salaries and operating expenses for the wastewater enterprise fund. Uh, so, and we're evil, we're better to track things, and everything is, has a separate line. So, that's, that was a total in '24, and so now it is broken out. So, the subsidy that is listed for the 550, 432, that is for the, the overall budget for wastewater, $700,432. There's $100,000 of the wastewater's retained earnings, which will decrease the subsidy, and also $50,000 in anticipated wastewater user fees. So, there's $150,000 decrease in the budget as a whole. So, the net subsidy that the general fund has to transfer to that is now the 550,000. So, the wastewater debt service is listed as a separate line item. In Article IV, we're going to pay all the debt just out of the general fund for tracking purposes and budgeting purpose more to keep UNIS cleaner and to tie to the different, uh, reporting that we do for debt as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Anticipate that at town meeting?
Yeah.
Question that's been asked, so I would anticipate-
Sure.
-that, that, because it's such a drastic change.
Yeah.
Last one, if you could just explain to us, it says overage shortage, same page, bottom, about, uh, 1.2 million down to 265,000.
So, there was, um, an overtransfer to the wastewater enterprise fund last year because of an issue with the debt service, um, because of the way it was scheduled. I think they, in certain circumstances, debt service usually, like, for what we're doing now, is for example, we are, we're working on it in '24, the first debt service will be in '25. And this particular debt service, uh, that was like the 16 million debt service, that debt service didn't actually begin until FY '24, but it was budgeted in, excuse me, in FY '24. It was, yeah, it was, yeah, it was budgeted.
FY '24.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry. Yeah, I'm doing three years at once all the time during the day. So, uh, overall, so what happened was, there was, um, an excess transfer. So, the funds, with that, there's a subsequent article which will correct the debt service. It's, so it's 858,742 dollars will be, um, a transfer within FY '24 to continue for the, the debt service budget for wastewater. So, it was just, it was more, um, a transfer error. So, the funds, it wasn't that they, you know, like, didn't spend certain money, it was just kind of allocated incorrectly. So, this is more just a correction, more in line with putting everything all in the correct year. It was just kind of a, you know, it wasn't, you know, to be fair, it was just an error.
Okay. Um, similar question that's going to be asked at town meeting, if not before that, so that explanation should be handy.
Yeah.
The, and thank you.
I think, not to interrupt, but when you see the, the other article with the transfer for the debt correction, I think that kind of, it, it ties everything together.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, and part of my reason for wanting to hold off on voting to support this, is under sources, we did add, um, overlay surplus to the budget this year.
Yes.
And we haven't had that voted yet, so it doesn't exist, and that's going to drastically change this budget if it doesn't get voted that way. So, I think it's important to wait. That's all my questions for now. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Jeff, do you have any?
No, my only question was on overlay surplus. Michael answered, Michael asked everything else.
Yeah, and the only reason I incorporated it was because it was introduced at one of the prior meetings that it had been discussed.
No, thank you for adding.
And there was an estimate, you know, of the, of, of kind of what was talked about. I did speak with, uh, the Director of Assessing, uh, and then did my own analysis over the overlay surplus, to see if it was a realistic feasible number that wouldn't be detrimental. And, um, it should be a realistic number for this, and that will kind of bring everything together. They can't necessarily move forward until all the abatement applications have been submitted, and that's due at the end of the month, actually April 1st. So, but by the end of the month, it's a pretty safe assessment, you know, to really go through and look at it. Um, and I believe that they are voting next week. So, that will be finalized. So, to see if things could work, sometimes it's put in there. I think it's a safe assumption. It may change, and we certainly would kind of adjust accordingly.
And if, sorry, yeah, and if it were to change, you don't anticipate any kind of larger change? Yeah.
Be very unforeseen, unexpected.
Don, did you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I'm going to go more global. Uh, Michael's looking in the other direction. Where might I find a breakout that's publicly available for all of these, uh, which essentially summary lines, assessors' salary and wages, accessories, expenses? Where, where can I find a publicly available breakout of what those represent?
We haven't put it, um, for public. It's been within the budget discussions, but everything, the detail of every dollar is recorded in UNIS, and we can provide that report to you.
I asked for that at the budget presentation, when we did that with the Finance Committee. Uh, I will note that we had like an 8-inch binder that had about half an inch worth of material in it, and I kept waiting to see what the breakouts were. So, I went around and started surfing online. Uh, in, this is one department of Brewster. It's wages full-time, wages overtime, wages holiday pay, wages part-time, wages longevity, uh, repair and maintenance of equipment, repair and maintenance of buildings, uniforms, clothing, other departmental expenses. Uh, everything we have here is a summary. It's like an assemblage of headlines. Uh, only way that I can assess a budget is by looking at how it's built from the bottom up. Uh, I've mentioned that again, uh, on that Saturday. I'm really interested in knowing for my own benefit, because every year, we print, we print the town report, and it gives everybody salaries individually, but when we, we're approving a budget, and if you're really serious about even the concept of zero-based budgeting, it doesn't matter to me whether this is 3.8% up or 2.4% down, because it's based on this assumption that you're always going to operate in exactly the same manner, and that everybody knows what that manner is. So, I mean, unless and until I get, like, the whole breakout, this kind of thing, I'm not, I could vote to place it, but I'm not going to vote to support it.
I can provide whatever, I, we could get down to the actual-
I think it's important for the public to see it.
The salary calculation for each individual person. We, we actually did that in UNIS. We, to the point where we actually figured out the day that they would have a step increase and calculated. So, it's like, you know, 140 days here, you know, 300 days.
I get that, but my observation is that I haven't seen it myself, so I can't expect the public knows it.
So, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say that. I recall you saying that on that Saturday. If you want more information, I'm happy to follow up too, so send me an email, because I haven't gotten any emails requesting anymore, and I'm happy to facilitate that conversation.
I don't feel like I have to spend, send an email to get a budget detail. I mean, the budget detail should be available. I can get it on any other town site where I just hit a button and it, and it drools down in the detail.
My only point, Don-
To be fair, we didn't finalize it, so we didn't want to publish it. We had made adjustments to the enhancements.
Right.
And so, we've been rolling the budgets forward, and we wanted to make sure that we had all the updates. So, everything that is in that spreadsheet is in UNIS, and the detail of which is, is there, and we're happy to give it to you. We didn't publicly, um, distribute it because it hasn't been voted on.
Thank you. Don?
Madam Chair, all due respect to everybody, it's a chicken or the egg argument. To finalize the budget, I need to see how it was built. Yeah, I don't, I'm not willing to finalize it first and then find out what I finalized.
So, I'm just going to go, again, with all due respect, that we do this every year, that I've been on the board and that you've been on the board, and if you're not getting something in particular that you've gotten previous years, please let me know that, because I'm happy to have that conversation and make sure that we all get whatever information we need. But I can't know, because I'm not telepathic, what information you're looking for, because I too have been on this board for multiple years, and I'm not seeing something that we got last year or previous year that we didn't get right now. Maybe our schedule is off, but I would say the information, whatever it is you're looking for, nobody is trying to keep it from you. So, if you have a specific info, you have a piece of paper to point to, talking about another town, share that information. Thank you.
But again, Madam Chair, it's, it couldn't be more specific. I just want to see how these summary line items were arrived at. It's, it's that simple.
Kathleen just told you she can give you that information.
Yep, happy to.
Right. So, it's not that you, they're not information. People just need to know what, what you need and what you're looking for, myself included. So, that's the only point I'm making. If you need more information, then ask for it.
I did. I got you. I asked for it on the Saturday.
You asked for it on the Saturday, when we spent, I think about, I don't know, nine hours?
Mm-hmm.
All going over numbers, so forgive anybody, including myself, if you didn't get some information that you asked for on that day.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if it, that was missed. It's just, um, as we were, we can even do it in the different stages, what was the original, what has the enhancements, because as we roll it from like the department budget to the town administrator's budget to the select board budget, that's where the adjustments show. So, it's, it's actually a great mechanism to, to track the changes and, and see, you know, how everything, you know, comes forward, as opposed to just the final numbers that were presented.
So, if you could get that information together and, you know, distribute it, that would be helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you.
It's, it's sizable.
Yeah. Well, and so whatever way you think it's best to, to share that info.
Probably like a, like a file. Would, would everybody be comfortable having it emailed and just kind of scroll through?
Yeah, or you could, maybe we could even just put it in a Dropbox if, if that's more helpful.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it'll email, how big it is.
Yeah, so, might be better.
Whatever is, whatever works to get it just distributed, we'll, we'll do it tomorrow morning for you.
Great, thank you. Don, did you have any other questions?
Nope.
Uh, Michael?
I move that we place the Article IV Town Operating Budget on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Madam Chair, if I heard the motion, it was to place Article IV. There was no accept or recommend.
Right.
Is it the intent of the board to revisit this on Monday, the 25th of March?
Yeah, we'll have to.
The only reason I ask is the, as you may know, the Finance Committee is holding their charter mandated public hearing, uh, this Thursday evening at 6:15 in the small conference room. Um, I believe the Finance Director will be joining me on that. Um, I'm going to sit in my office and remote in, so I can have access to all my documents, but I'll be participating. So, I can explain to them that the operating budget has been placed but not finally adopted.
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just for the record, so everybody knows, I've talked to a number of the Finance Committee, uh, members, and they want the same kind of information that I was asking for. So...
Would you like that report sent to the, the detailed report?
Yeah, Peter used.
Sent to the Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Okay, certainly.
Because I'm not sure what they'd be holding a hearing on otherwise.
Michael?
And then Joe, you can articulate what my question is. I just want to know how we got from the 4.5 to the 8.1, so that they understand.
Correct.
There doesn't seem to be any debate yet with the operating budget, so we're not trying to hold up the public hearing. We're not asking for a million dollars.
And I don't mean to suggest that either. No, no. Uh, and, and if I may, my notes reflect, um, on the, um, then and now, so to speak. Uh, I'm, I'm working off of what I presented on February 5th, um, and compare that to what is being presented tonight on March 19.
Yeah, and I think it's fair to say that the only thing we're asking for is to say, okay, we're the ones who approved the enhancement of services. We just want to know that impact and, and spelled out. So, it's not that we don't support the budget, it's that, right, we're just going to go, this is where we started, this is where we ended up, and that was the board's actions, so.
If, sorry?
That's what I'm looking for.
Yep.
Don's looking for more detail, but I just wanted not to lose my peace.
Uh, thank, thank you.
And I don't want the public to think that we're not talking about supporting the budget, more importantly.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Right, that's my point.
And if, just as a follow-up to that, there was one other question, Joe, that I asked that you could get, um, as part of that 8.1. Just wanted a, um, final figure in the one position in enhancement of services for the DPW. It was presented as a group, and I did say, can we break that out and just show the one to the public? So, if I can get that one position and the amount, including onboarding, and I don't need that tonight, um, and including the onboarding costs, just so that I have that final, what the board picked for an enhancement of services for the DPW. Does that make sense?
Has that been decided?
Should have.
I'm sorry, I'm, sorry, um-
At least-
Has the, has the EOS for DPW been decided?
In my mind, we talked about bringing on the person to help Sean Libby, not the cemetery piece. I thought that's where we landed.
Yeah, I thought we did too, because we talked about the fact that, um, there is somebody in the position that can assist Robin at the DPW. It's just that they-
More importantly, maybe with deleting time from Sean.
Right, so the, the position, when we talked about what?
I got it. So, Joe, you had brought up another scenario where there is already a position that exists.
Right.
We just hadn't filled it.
Correct, correct.
So, that I guess is the number that I'm looking for.
And, yeah, the position exists, is presently vacant. Um, I believe the Director, um, has a scenario in place. We just haven't had the opportunity to meet to discuss that. So, I think to the Finance Director's question, no, that's not baked in this budget yet, because it could be, um, um, not accretion, but... There's attrition, thank you. Um, that we could create the position by attrition.
My apologies, I confused the issue. You had another scenario that actually made more sense than the one that we had looked at, so just want to know where we land with the money on that.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, uh, Madam Chair, I just, if I could reserve time for a minute, I just want to make my notes, uh, but also ask some questions of the board.
In Chicago.
Um, and, and, and I, if I may, sorry, Madam Chair, um, I appreciate the act that you've gone through the clarifications and all that, um, and I feel fully armed to, uh, go through the public hearing on Thursday for sure and share whatever comes out of this meeting. Could you take a moment, though, to talk about, given some of the comments that were raised tonight, these articles are created on your behalf. Um, you can see that the vast majority of them say, "By request of the Select Board."
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I've said many times that the warrant is your document. So, if the board could take a moment to give guidance on Appendix B, which, um, in, in my experience here for the last, I think, five annual town meetings, has been a salaries and wages, expenses line with a bottom line total, then totaling up. So, the comment about enhancement of services, I can certainly add, as I did last year, commentary at the end of Appendix B. I can still add it to the explanation as well, because I think that's going to, you know, we always guide folks to look at Article IV and Appendix B at the same time. And I would just ask for the board for guidance on, we, Finance and Administration can provide any level of detail that you require. I think on behalf of my colleague, I would just remind that we do use the UNIS Fund Accounting Software, as I call it. Um, it is a, a powerful database that has all of the data that we've amassed over the years. We can generate reports. Now, when I say we, I mean Kathleen and her team. Um, we, me, can do very little other than drop into an Excel spreadsheet and make my own stuff. And that's another option. You know, one of the benefits of UNIS is being able to drop raw data into a spreadsheet or into a table and make something of it. Um, I know other towns have invested more than we have in the short term, and other programs that can draw that data out, um, I believe our former colleague, the County Finance Director, had talked about a solution several years ago that we did not go forward on. So, we can give you any of the data that we have. Um, I cannot speak intelligently as to how we can provide that, other than system-generated reports, or a data dump that's going to require somebody to build something. But the warrant, all the, um, articles that you place and that you support and the appendices are yours to guide.
Mm-hmm. So, I can say off the top that any four- So I can say off the top that any format other than Munis that gives a better overview of the information, I always find helpful, because when I get Munis reports, it is literally like reading Chinese to me. So I don't know what that does in terms of an impact, in terms of creating different types of spreadsheets, but, and I'll go to the Board if you agree or disagree, Michael.
I'm very comfortable with what we've been doing, Joe, and it works. And I do think that explaining the enhancement of services in the article description makes it really easy. And then the Appendix B, having a breakdown in Appendix B, that's worked for the last four or five years. Last year was the first time we did, in my mind, that we did positions, but there was a lot of them.
Right.
But I think the way we're doing it, I don't see any reason to add anything else to it. The information's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, as long as, you know, again, I'd go back to look at the last warrant in Appendix B and just make sure that it's all clear, right? Because I agree, what we've been doing has worked, but, I mean, if there's any opportunity to make something clearer, I'm all for it, as long as it's not going to impact trying to prepare the warrant to get it out of here, so. Joe?
I just want to add to that point. So this is what I lovingly refer to as my arts and craft project. And I will share with you, the title is Joe's Big Book of Town Meeting. And what this is meant to be, so this is the data that I have as of this evening. But within Article Four, there is a tab for every single department and line item in the budget where I will have more information, so that we're somebody to ask at some point, what is the other purchase services line for Department 149? And what does it look like year over year? That I have a fighting chance to have that data immediately available. In years past, my colleague in the Finance Department would have a computer there with access to Munis to also do it in real time. So we're trying to create, without overwhelming people, data points that we can immediately contact so that we do answer these questions. Nobody wants to succeed more town meeting than me as town administrator, given that this role is inextricably linked to town meeting and the budget. That's why I know we're 47 and a half days away from town meeting. And I know that my colleague and I sit here in support of you folks and your budget, which is what gets presented to town meeting. So we can produce what you need us to do. I think the old Army slogan was, the difficult we can do immediately, the impossible takes a little longer. We can do that, but we don't want to lose sight of all the other requirements that we have, so. Just know that whatever we end up doing, we're striving to have as much information available at our fingertips to answer the questions.
Thank you, Joe.
If the Board wants a different Appendix B, we're open to that.
Well, again, I wouldn't disagree with Michael in the sense that, you know, what we've had has been working. I'm just saying, if we're talking about looking at some sort of spreadsheet that makes it easier, then that's fine. But not if it delays anything. And back to the other point about other information, I think, just again, for the public's sake, the only reason we were talking about, you know, getting the backup info for the town budget was to just say that exactly, to support all the decisions we made. Not that there's anything wrong with the budget. It's to say what the Board started with and where we ended up. So I want that to be perfectly clear to Finance, too.
Right.
Yeah, no, thank you, Madam Chair. I would, you know, we can kind of go through the process and try to see if we can find a happy medium that, you know, we can do like every account's budget, you know, which is helpful, but in like just tracking our costs to see, you know, where we were at, you know, what fits, what doesn't, kind of thing. We kept it at a little bit higher level and to match what was in last year's. Tried to mirror that and do the multiple years, tie it all together. We can go down to lower levels, so you could see, you know, like the salaries, you know, the overtime, the sick, you know, things like that. You know, office expenses and whatever for each department, that is certainly available. We can try to make it be a little less awful from you. To me, I like, I like it, I'm used to it now, it doesn't bother me.
And again, I don't want to overcomplicate it, so.
Yeah, it may be something that, you know, might not be able to really get to be picture perfect. We'll try to find a happy medium.
Yeah, no, and I think that's fine.
Something that, you know, accessible to everybody, but it may not be something that you necessarily want to put in the warrant, because it'll be.
Right, it'll be, yeah. No, agreed.
We'll use everyone's budget to print it.
Yeah. Did you, Michael?
No, I'm ready to move on.
Oh, really? Oh, now you want to move on?
I was going to make a motion.
Before you do that.
Yeah.
That's safe.
Yeah, I just want to be crystal clear here. I'm not suggesting that the warrant have an appendix like that, but I am saying, with all due respect, I have a whole bunch of binders that are that size that don't say Joe's Big Book on them. They say Don Howell Selectman, and they're fully populated, just like that. So I know that they have existed. I'm looking for that for us, because people hire us to get into this stuff. The public, once we decide that we're going to approve it, then what we've been doing is just fine with me, because the warrant gives enough detail and we certainly can provide answers, but only if we had the information ourselves upfront. That's where I'm coming from.
Michael?
I would start this to end, did we already vote?
You did, yes.
Yeah, we did to place.
Or zero to place Article Four.
To place it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So back to Article Four, before I get on to a motion on Article Five, I just would like to thank Chief LeBlanc and Deputy Chief Thornton for their very great explanation on their enhancement of services. So thank you for the detail, read well, was easy to understand, and thank you both.
I thought there was some sort of dig coming your way, so. That was baiting.
Ready for anything. And he's ready to throw it back, so I'm not going.
Welcome is probably the comment.
So, all right. So I move that we vote to recommend and place Article Five, Monomoy Regional School District Budget Assessment to the Town of Harwich for $29,876,982.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry, who seconded?
Me.
Dawn? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero?
Four, zero.
Thank you.
I move that we.
Did this one, I think, didn't you?
Accept, recommend, and place Article Seven, Water Department Budget in the amount of $4,831,887.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could just catch up?
Yep.
That was our, accept, recommend, place?
Yes.
Moved and seconded?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero.
We'll just comment on the Water Department and Waste Water Department. The Water, Waste Water Superintendent also did an excellent job explaining in an email to us his budget, and I think that document should be made public as well, whether it go in next week's packet or anywhere. But that was a very great explanation, and they had a revote and they changed some things, but great job to the Water Commissioners and Dan Pelletier. With that, let me get through all that information, okay?
So Madam Chair, members, if I could just speak to the draft article, it's the ninth one in your packet. So the question was, has been raised, and I believe answered by Council, but this article was created in anticipation of needing a standalone article. But if you go back to your Article Four for a moment, you'll see that one of the identified sources is in fact the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund and the reason for it, meaning to help pay debt service. It's my understanding, and I'll confirm again with Council tomorrow, that this article that's in front of you is not necessary to achieve that, because it will happen under Article Four.
And I was going to do a motion on the Article Eight, the Waste Water Budget.
I apologize, I jumped the gun. Thank you so much for doing that.
Madam Chair allows you to step over that, then, so we.
My bad, my apologies.
Not to cut him off, I don't want to lose my train of thought. So what you're saying is we should hold off on this until.
So I wouldn't do anything regarding Article Nine yet. I think whatever you're going to do in Article Eight would be great, and then we can talk about it.
Okay.
So I move that we accept, recommend, and place Article Eight, Waste Water Department Budget of $700,432.
Second.
Two dollars in the annual town meeting warrant.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero.
So the ninth article, what I would recommend at this point is you may still want to use the numbering. So we're going to hold Article Nine in abeyance for right now. There may be other uses for that number and for that article, if I could say it that way. And then that flows into the discussion you'll have with the petitioners, because based on your guidance, the first eight articles were numbered as such, based on prior years, and then to intersperse petitioned articles. So that would start with the Tree Preservation Bylaw under that list of citizen initiative petitions.
Thank you, Joe. So, and Nine we'll come back to next week?
In some form, correct.
Okay, so now we have the petition articles. We need to put them on, so, does anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would certainly make a motion. I didn't know if your intent was to allow the petitioners to speak, but if you want a motion on the floor to start the conversation.
Yeah.
So I would, well, see, these we don't have the choice on place, so I'm not even going to say place. So really, this comes down to whether the Board wants to support it or not.
Yeah, don't we have to officially?
We have to place it.
Yeah, so I guess technically we do, should we not say place? I can't recall from previous years. I thought we normally had to place them, even though they have to be done.
So, yeah, my recommendation, see, again, the major concern at this point is going to be numbering.
Right.
So I would recommend that you vote to place Article Ten as the petitioned article on Tree Preservation Bylaw.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I may, I mean, I will put a motion on the floor on the support, because it would have to be a, it would have to be a positive motion for the Board to weigh in on support.
True, you're right.
So I would put that in, because it's been important to say that the town meeting warrant shows the vote.
Our votes.
So I would move for discussion's sake to support Article Ten, Petition Article, Tree Preservation Bylaw.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Madam Chair, you have a motion?
To place.
Correct.
That's done.
I don't believe it was voted on.
No, we didn't vote it.
We didn't vote on it.
So place, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero.
Thank you.
Now, support.
Second, Joe, was to support same article, and it has been seconded by Dawn.
Yep.
And then just a comment, I have no intention of supporting this article. It, I'll let the petitioner speak, but the reading of it alone, I didn't have to get past the second paragraph. But I only want this, and I only said support, so we have a positive motion so that we can take an action. I will be voting no.
Thank you. Patrick, did you want to speak?
I can sit down or stand, whatever.
The only thing I'll ask you is, just because we have a lot to get through, that we limit the time.
So I'm not here to advocate or not support it. There is some confusion on when I submitted it in the PDF form, that some of the graphics was eliminated and some of the alignment of the text was out of alignment. So I resent it to you, all right? So I'd like to have it clearly on the warrant in the correct formats, okay?
May I share what you have in your packet with the petitioner?
Yes.
So Patrick, I would need this back if I could. Right. So, you know, I create the petition, I get the signatures, and then I submit your form to submit it. And on here, it says, what's the article? For that, I use the beginning statements for the petition. And then on the concluding part here, it wants an explanation, so I use the explanation on the last page of the petition. So there's repetition here, suddenly, going from the article itself to the submission, and it's, and what you have now is repetition of both the paragraph I submitted here, plus the petition, plus the explanation, plus the explanation. Is there a way I can sit with someone just to clarify it so no one's confused? Also, the formatting of the actual petition was, not all the graphics came through.
When you say graphics, oh.
Yeah.
Oh, you've got the photos of the trees.
Right. That should be on the fourth page. Joe, it's before that, Joe?
Yep, I just want to test one thing if I could.
Okay.
Yep, so the boxes that we have. You have this one?
Yeah. Page three or four.
So in the table, the images do not carry over.
Correct.
So we can add the images.
Okay. And I submitted it, I resubmitted it to you with the images.
So I'll go back to Mike.
The petitioner would have to go back.
Yeah, you'll have to go back, but thank you for showing me that. And now I understand what you meant by the images, so let Joe talk to the.
So in light of the fact that hard copy documents were provided by petitioners to the town, and the town is greatly prohibited in modifying, the language on the front of that petition, where what you see says, to see if the town will vote to, trees are a tremendous asset to our community environment. That's part of the petition. We cannot remove it. Council provided review of all this to make sure that everything that was included, not the petition, if I may.
This was included.
The petition.
This single page.
Correct. Council built the article based on the petition and all the other documents. There would be a grave concern, I mean, if the petitioner wants us to send the Word document that he's now providing to Council, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that's what we would have to do, right? I mean, you'd need the Word document.
So Council has opined and created warrant documents for all of these petitioned articles.
So.
That's why we shared it with the petitioners in advance.
Right. So Patrick, I guess the question is, at this point, you're not satisfied with the format that Council has provided for us to.
Can we back up and can I have a copy of what I did submit and see if the graphics were there? I'm surprised they weren't, and I'm surprised that all of the indentations and alignment of the wording is no longer correct.
So I would just ask that we address that. He can come by the office tomorrow to compare the two, so that you guys can have a discussion.
I can give them tonight. Did you not receive an email from me with an attachment from Council?
I don't recall.
So I sent to both petitioners articles and said, this is the substance of what we have. So we did provide that.
So then.
I'll have to check my email.
Why don't you check your email, make sure, and then if there's any questions, you can follow up directly. Because we're going to have to finalize this, you know.
Yeah, I know, and I would like to have it accurate for what people signed for.
Okay, so why don't you just go back, check your email, look at that, and then have a conversation with Administration.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I still think there is an opportunity to speak to the substance.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Thank you. Because you are voting to or not to support it. So basically, we live here because of Cape Cod, the water, the trees, the woodlands. What I'm concerned about is when construction is occurring, that nine, six, nine, 10 acres are stripped, cleaned, regraded, and all the trees removed, and then they begin building houses. This is a copy of Mashpiece Bylaw, which was passed in the fall. It simply says, when construction is occurring. It simply says, when construction is occurring, the defined setback perimeters, as defined in our bylaws, any tree greater than six inches is a protected tree. You have the option of to leave it alone. If you do cut it and remove it, then you have two options. Either you replace with equivalent trees, or you pay into a tree revenue fund, so that that, those funds can be later used for buying trees. So, this is strictly concerning construction on property. If you're a property owner, you're not doing construction, you can cut any tree you wish, okay?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, the second paragraph where it says, this bylaw does not prohibit a landowner's right to remove a protected tree.
Correct.
Removal of a protected trees will be authorized so long as the property owner undertakes one of the mitigation options set forth herein. I could go on, but I won't. Where does it say that my property that I own now wouldn't be subject to this tree bylaw? And isn't that a little confusing to the public?
Because, under definitions, when it applies, it applies when there is construction going on. If you're not doing construction, it doesn't apply to you.
Again, I voiced my objection, and I really do hope that as we get through this process, the petitioner said that he was going to have informational sessions, and I hope that this board entertains having an informational session, so that the other side of the public that are completely against this can at least get their voice out in public. Oftentimes, it's a one-sided story with somebody's interpretation of science or what's going on. And I think we owe it to the public, especially taking away private property rights or attempting to take away private property rights to educate people on both sides.
So, maybe we could have a session, you know, that addresses all the petition articles for any questions by, held by the board.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could ask the petitioner, hi, Patrick.
Sure.
So, just to clarify, you had mentioned, as a private property owner, if I was, if I bought a parcel of land and was going to build my home on that parcel of land.
Right.
That this petition would be enforced.
Correct.
So, for me, with a strong belief in less government and not more, and a strong belief in people's personal property rights, and I read Mashpee's bylaw, I think, as it sits now, I would not be in support of this for those two major reasons, and then a couple others, which I won't get into. But I feel there could have been a little bit more work done on this to allow people who buy a piece of property and want to do what they want to do with their property made available to them. So, that's my point.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, though.
May I respond?
Oh, yeah, sure.
We also live in a community. And we live here on Cape Cod because of the water, the sea shores, and the woodlands. So, if you remove any one of those, what does our community become? We're not an urban society. We are a Cape Cod society. We are very dependent on our woodlands. All of our tourism is dependent on the woodlands. It's very important we maintain them and keep them. So, this clear-cutting property just doesn't fit to Cape Cod. So, there's a social aspect in addition to the personal aspect.
I understand that, and I appreciate what you're saying and respect it. I think sometimes we believe that our belief is the belief of everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm happy this goes before town meeting, and I'm happy that the town will have an opportunity to weigh in on this. But, as I stated earlier, not everybody shares the view that you share.
Yeah, right.
And that's okay. That's what, that's what makes us.
Who we are.
Who we are in a great country. So, when you use the word "we," you may have a mouse in your pocket, for all I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Usually, Skye, though.
Oh, that's right.
He pees on trees.
Well, and he signs all your petitions as well, so.
Okay. Don?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Two things. First of all, a lot of people up here actually have experience in these things. The word "construction" has no real meaning under our bylaws. Any property that's subject to a site plan of some sort, and that could be even small, where you sketch out where you're going to put a shed, but that doesn't necessarily line up with the language here. And secondly, I feel compelled, because of the interplay that just happened, to say, we've got two people sitting here representing the Harwich Conservation Trust tonight. Over the years, we have done magnificent things in partnership with them, and they have done wonderful things on their own to protect large stands of trees and forests in general. So, it isn't as if we're trying to urbanize the town and just pave the whole thing over. So, I hope that that becomes a basis for discussion for everybody, because no one has ever talked about converting Harwich into some sort of city.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. No, I totally support HCT, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want me to remain standing for the next one, or do you want me to sit down?
Yeah, well, let us go ahead and, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Madam Chair, you do have an open motion.
Oh, sorry, we didn't find, yeah, you're right. So, we've moved to place and support.
The support is in the motion.
So, you've voted separately to place.
Place. Now, sorry, to support. Right. Thank you. Feeling slightly brain dead.
So.
Go ahead. A vote is no support. I already put the motion on the floor.
The motion is there, right? So, it's a.
For the support.
For the support.
It has to be a positive motion.
No, I understand. I missed that whole motion to support.
So, there's no further discussion, correct? So, all in favor of support for the petition article, Number Ten, we're calling it Number Ten for now, right?
Correct.
For the trees. All in favor? All against?
Aye.
Okay. Next one?
Madam Chair.
It's still on.
In the list of, under that one, the tree preservation, Number Eleven, Cape Cod Community Media Center comes up. Do we want to go back to?
Oh, did I miss that?
So, if I may, on your agenda, the next one listed is home rule petition, pesticides. That, that other article, I can speak to later.
Thank you.
So, next up on your agenda is the home rule petition regarding pesticides, and I believe that's Mr. Oden as well.
Right. So, can I get a motion?
And that is contemplated to be Article Thirteen in the warrant.
I'll move that we place Article Fifteen, you said?
Thirteen.
Thirteen in the, in annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
And then, I would, I would make a motion for conversation purposes, again.
You have to vote on the first one.
Yeah, right. So, we're placing it. So, no discussion on placing. All in favor of placing the pesticide article?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Okay. Now, I would make a motion to support Article Thirteen, home rule petition pesticides.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I would just start the discussion, if I may, with, this has been before us before. It has failed before, and it seems that we're going to continue to bring it back until there's a different outcome.
Let me correct you, Mr. McCaslin.
Hold on, so, excuse me. He's speaking, so when I go to you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm finished with that, and then I would just ask the petitioner if anything in this article has changed since last year.
This petition was not offered last year.
Okay. Has anything changed, was the question?
Has this petition ever been before town meeting?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Other discussion. I'll go to you, Patrick, so you can say your piece on the article.
Right. So, just to reemphasize, yes, there are individual rights, there's personal property rights, but there's also rules and regulation enabling us to live in a society. For example, the old, the code, general code for Harwich has 354 pages telling us individuals how to act, okay? So, yes, there are individual rights, property rights, but there's also a large bundle of governing and how individuals can act in society. This is a home rule petition asking permission from state legislature to allow Harwich to establish their own regulations when it comes to pesticides. It's a long process. It's a two-year process. If it's not acted on, it dies. This was passed in Har, in Orleans. It's also on, I forgot. It's, I think it's also on Wellfleet and Eastham's warrant this year. So, this is simply saying, you may use as many pesticides as you want. Well, let me back up. So, the biggest problem with outdoor use of pesticides, it doesn't stay within your yard. If it did, great. However, pesticides drift. They're on the ground. They penetrate through the soils. They get into our water. It affects, you know, the word pesticides means death. So, it affects human life. It affects children's lives. It affects pests, pets. It affects all of nature, all of the bayou around us. Pesticides are dangerous for life. So, this petition is restricting pesticide use to, for indoor use or on your personal body. If you don't like mosquitoes, rather than spraying the entire yard, you apply mosquito repellent to your body, okay? So, that's what this is doing. It's restricting, as Jeff's noted, you know, individual actions for the better of the community. And there are exceptions, of course, depending on what the individual circumstances are. Basically, it's saying, no more pesticides outdoors. Another example of a pesticide, well, there's forest types. There's pesticides includes insecticides, rodenticides, herbicides, and fungicides. Just talking about rodenticides, the secondary poisoning of great owls, of eagles, of hawks, of ground-eating birds, eating the insects that have been sprayed, is, talk to Wild Care. They'll give you the statistics on the amount of bird life harmed by pesticide spraying. So, this is just, again, don't spray pesticides outdoors. Use them indoors. Use them on your own personal body. And there's exceptions, of course, for whatever may be happening, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by board members. Michael?
So, just one quick question. So, this is a new article, hasn't been before us. Did we, in fact, just take the words roundup out of it and then add pesticides? Because this does mirror the, mirror the language on the roundup article that you brought forward in years past.
No, sir. This is a copy of what Orleans passed last year, this last past fall. It's not written, of course, roundups included, because it is a fungicide, pesticide, et cetera. But no, it's a, it's its own standalone article, okay?
Thank you. And do you know the status of the Orleans one?
Orleans passed.
Passed town meeting. Where is it with, sit with the other process?
It's been submitted to the legislature.
Okay. So, no, nothing?
Not yet.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah. And my only question, Patrick, is if this is a petition to petition the state to allow us to handle pesticide usage, who would do that in the town of Harwich? Who would be the governing, who would make?
Board of Health.
The Board of Health.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted that out there for the public.
Just comment to Selectman Handler, if I may, in past debates on this, there is something called MDAR, which is the state agency, which has licensed folks that control this, and not pointing to the Board of Health, which by all accounts are specialty in their field. But as far as I know, we don't have any pesticide specialists on the, on the board.
And if I may, back to Mr. McCaslin, your point being that there's already oversight in this area?
Correct.
Thank you.
Don, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to come at it a little differently from you folks. I mean, I personally don't use them. I have strong feelings about them, but if this is really a silent spring moment, it wasn't, that didn't change DDT use until there were laws nationally. I mean, I don't see how, especially if you take your premise that stuff migrates, that you can handle this on a local basis, because none of the groundwater respects the border with Chatham or Dennis or Brewster or anything like that. And I'm normally a libertarian at heart with local control of things, but I am troubled, especially since you already come up with, in paragraph two, the word findings, which means you've already presupposed the questions that would be posed, and you've got answers for them, that it's all bad. I personally agree that it's not, I don't use fungicides. I've got roses. I don't use Roundup. I don't use any of that stuff. But that's personal preference on my part. And I think that other people might be well-informed if they looked into it themselves for their personal use. But telling anybody on a local basis that the pesticide police are going to come, if you're using something, is completely unworkable. I mean, people could go to BJ's in Dartmouth, buy it, and bring it back here and use it, and no one would ever know.
That's true.
So, if you're going to impose rules on people, generally, you'd want them to be fairly and uniformly imposed, and I don't see how you can do that. I just don't.
So, let me respond. Similar to a stop sign, do we have a police officer standing at every stop sign ensuring that everybody driving stops? No. We take it on the general assumption that most humans care, and they know to follow the rules, and you don't need a strict enforcement to have this happen. Generally, people say, okay, I get it. We won't do this anymore, just like stop signs, you know?
Thank you, Patrick. You know, I'll just say that I'm not a fan of pesticides, but I would agree that, you know, trying to enforce something, and we've been down this road multiple times. I don't use them. I don't need a law to tell me not to use them, but I appreciate what you're trying to do. But we have been down this road before. But in any case, we've placed it. We voted to place it. And now, the question is, are we going to vote to support it? Joe?
Just to add to your record, again, these have been presented to counsel, as you've done every year, for counsel to offer some insights. I would note, under the proposed Section Six exemptions, under items B and C, the phrase "town manager" is used. That obviously does not apply here. That also appears in Section Seven, the phrase "town manager." And then, lastly, under Section Nine, severability clause, if you look at the second paragraph, it says, "provided that this bylaw is subject to the town obtaining special legislation from the great and general court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts authorizing the pesticide reduction bylaw as fore-said." Counsel's comment is, "the text of the home rule petition was not included in this petition, as was done in the fertilizer bylaw." Special legislation is required for both, and I believe counsel is saying, special legislation for the bylaw and for the special legislation. There is no need to also enact a bylaw, and counsel would not recommend that the town enact a bylaw as well. So, again, comments that counsel has provided for your information.
Thank you, Joe. Michael?
Just before you go to a vote, Joe, I didn't get that document, the town council's. And maybe it's a function of my email. Can you send that to me tomorrow?
I will. So, what you'll have is counsel had reviewed all petitioned articles. We have it in comment section. At present, it's still attorney-client privilege. So, I'd share with the board, and you can decide about publication after that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And so, I won't be able to see that until you decide it's available.
That's right. All in fa, all in favor of supporting the pesticide article, petition article? All, all not in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Thank you. I'm really having trouble with my vocabulary tonight. All opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Zero four.
Yeah, zero four.
Madam Chair, I move that we place Article Fourteen, pesticide, no, sorry, Special Act Fertilizers on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Madam Chair, I move that we support Special Act Fertilizers, Article Fourteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Jeff?
So, you want to?
Nope, go ahead.
I just want you to know that your efforts are not lost on, on this board member. If, if it, if these, if these pass or they fail, you've done one hell of a job educating. Talking about it, making people aware about it, whether or not they support it or they don't support it, I gotta, I really have to give you credit for your effort, and. you credit for your effort, and there are going to be people who think differently regardless of how this ends up. So I think it's a win for you regardless.
Well, thank you.
That's, that's all. I'm not supporting this one, but that's all I gotta say.
But thank you.
Michael?
I won't repeat my comment from the last two, but they, they are the same.
Okay. Don?
Thank you. The, the gist of this is a little different from the other one, so I am going to say something. There was a time when jurisdictionally, this was being considered by the state, that they offered the opportunity for the towns to opt out of the state. Secondarily, I am, I know our own Board of Health voted to try to hold jurisdiction here, and I do know that, looking at it, I think it's in the wrong place. I mean, it's in the state, in the agriculture department. It is not in the Department of Environmental Protection. So I, I don't understand why that's the case, and I don't understand, because this isn't about saying you can't use them. It's about who it is that gets to say you use them or don't use them, and I've always taken a position that to the extent that we could have done this, and we could have, because it was baked into cake originally, but we missed the deadline, so we couldn't opt out. So I am going to support this because ultimately, it doesn't ban the use of fertilizers. It just, it determines who it is who gets to say how, who applies them and how they apply them. So again, I don't see how the agriculture department gets involved with regulating commercial applications in residential areas.
Thank you, Don. And in fact, the Board of Health had to rescind their ruling on pesticide applications just because they did miss the deadline and they were out of order.
Fertilizer.
Fertilizers, right.
That's right. Michael?
You know, with Don's comments, then I will mirror some of my last conversations. Our own experts, golf course superintendent, our landscapers, many, many, many people came and spoke on who should regulate this, and I would say again, the Board of Health in Harwich is not Department of Agriculture. They are not the state. They do not have the same access to the professionals. This is covered by somebody. This is government overreach at best.
Thank you. You spoke. Did you have a comment?
Well, again, we're back talking about the environment. So you're very willing, in the next 50 years, to spend $4 billion to reduce nitrogen in our environment. By not putting fertilizers down, it will cost you nothing, and that contributes 15% of the nitrogen within our environment. So it's a very simple equation to look at. 50 years, $4 billion to remove nitrogen from our environment, or starting now, removing 15% at zero cost. You just don't do it. You stop. And, you know, we do live on Cape Cod, which is a natural environment, and if we look at nature for our education, for our teacher, nature, when was the last time you saw somebody out in the woodlands spraying pesticides, sprinkling fertilizers to ensure that the woodlands were perfect? Never. Nature's already figured all this out. They have birds to eat the, the cattle pearlers. You know, they have microbes to eat the other things in the ground, so, and leaves fall, and leave, leaf mulch is the number one fertilizer that we should be using here on Cape Cod. It's organic, it's mulch, and it works. So rather than blowing all your leaves, taking them to the dump, you should keep those and reuse those in your very own yard instead of putting down synthetic fertilizers. So this is only talking about not applying synthetic fertilizers. Use certified organic fertilizers, and you're okay.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yeah, thank you.
Michael?
Just to follow up, you know, the, the "we" comment about the mouse in the pocket. The 15% is Patrick's number, and that's something he read someplace. We had experts in the room and our own professionals saying that 15% is not the number. That was a number. That is not the number anymore. So that is your opinion, not the consensus.
May I have your number?
On, on town meeting. Look back to last year's debate on this. It's right there.
Can you give me the number?
I'm not, I don't, no, I don't have the number, but it's not 15%. And they stood in the room and told you it wasn't and why. So I ask you to look back, and I'll just look forward to the debate this year.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just, let, let him finish.
Patrick, are you finished?
Yes, for, for the fertilizer, yes.
Yeah, okay, so. Sharon?
Sharon, please, Board of Health. I'm not necessarily speaking for them, but some things that I'd like to bring up here because this seems to be a little one-sided. I agree that we shouldn't be using pesticides or fertilizers indiscriminately, but we do have people here on the Cape that are certified to use the pesticides and the fertilizers correctly. When, when the board back in 2016 voted to approve RCWMP, all right, referring back to what Don was getting at, we did not, we did not agree at that point to do anything. We said we would do education. Up till now, we really haven't done it, and I have been after Carrie, and we are, she's got some stuff set up to do, all right? We cannot have regulations as it stands. Now, I don't know what this home rule would change if the state would say, yes, you can now regulate that, because at this point, we cannot regulate fertilizer. We can have a policy, and our policy, as it stands, follows what the state does. All right? There is no way to police every individual. That just doesn't work. That's for fertilizer. I want to bring, all right, one other thing, as far as fertilizer and pesticides, I did check with Dan. I don't have the numbers. They do check the water for that. All right? He's got the data on that. They really have not found much of anything, and maybe in some cases, none. When it comes to the nitrogen, the amount of nitrogen contributed by fertilizer is, and don't quote me on the number, I think somewhere around 30% to the nitrogen in the water. Most of the nitrogen in the water is coming from our septic systems. All right? A little bit, on, this is, I'm going to try to make it short. When it comes to pesticides, let me ask you something. Do you, does anybody here take Tylenol? All right? Tylenol works. It's great. If you take too much of it, it gives you liver damage. How about aspirin? Anybody take aspirin? Okay? That really works well. If you overtake it, it affects your platelets and you're going to have bleeding issues. There isn't anything that you can take pharmaceutically like that, that you are going to have pros and cons to, good and bad effects. When it comes to pesticides, and I know we, we're pulling this information together, we don't have it yet, look at what we're trying to get rid of. We're looking at, mostly here on the Cape, we're looking at ticks, all right? We're looking at mosquitoes. What do ticks, what do ticks carry? Lyme disease? They carry encephalitis? And there's a whole list of things that it does carry, all right? Some of those can be very devastating if they're not caught early enough. A lot of them mimic colds. The number of people that get the bullseye with Lyme disease is less than 30%. So that's not going to be one that's going to point it out to you. All right? The mosquitoes carry West Nile virus. They also carry Babesia, which was very common over there in Nantucket. All right? So what I'm trying to get at briefly is pesticides also have a role to play, not to be used indiscriminately, but it's not like they don't have a role. Some of the diseases that these things carry, have you ever known anybody that had Lyme disease that was long, almost like your long COVID? I know quite a few people like that. All right? All right? And some of them, it affects them that they can't even go back to work. So pesticides do have a place. Do we need to use them correctly? Yes. To ban them totally, I don't agree with. I don't agree with ban, banning fertilizer totally. All right? But I just want to come, get that, I think he's got some good points, but I'm also saying that it's not as simple as black and white, and there's very little in life that is black and white. And that seems to be, as far as I'm concerned, the same with pesticides and fertilizers, particularly pesticides. We are putting together some, or I should say, we, Carrie is putting some stuff together, hopefully to present maybe as handouts even at the May meeting, that people can have an idea of, you know, what, what do pesticides really do? How do they help? Because a lot of people don't think about, all they're thinking about is maybe how it affects their environment, and maybe to some degree it does, but it also does some good. So I just want some people to think that there are two sides to the issue. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
All right. Good job.
Thank you.
And point we have motion to support on, right? All in favor?
Can I just make one comment before you vote? Real quick comment. You heard me before, and I really believe in local exercise of local control, and it was an option that was available to us. I am troubled, however, that you've already, we've come to the conclusion that it should all be banned in this article, and as such, I, I can't vote yes, but I'm not going to vote no either. I'll just abstain from it because there's some good points, but it would have to be amended to, to get past that, because you're inferentially saying you don't need anybody to control it because we're going to ban it.
Yeah, well, I think on that level, I mean, to me, fertilizer, to Sharon's point, good and bad and everything, and, you know, some places it can be used, I also think this is a case of unless the whole, the state or through DEP were going to ban fertilizers, then there's no way that town by town, although the action may be commendable, I, I don't see it as enforceable, and you can go anywhere to buy fertilizer, so if you're not going to respect the, the idea of your community passing this, then you can go do whatever you want. So unless the state was going to take action, or the feds were going to take action, to Michael's earlier point, you know, there are people who are, you know, professionals doing this job, and if we could leave it to just them, then that'd be great, but I, I don't see how that's enforceable unless there was some sort of unified approach to the thing. So as much as I appreciate, as I said before, I appreciate the pesticides, I, I don't use them, fertilizer, et cetera, so I, I just don't see how it's enforceable. So back to, now I'm going to go to the vote. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Abstain.
Zero three with one abstention?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just for clarity, in none, in neither petition is the word banned used. It's respecifying the correct usage, in my perception of correct. Okay? Thanks, Jeff.
It does use the word prohibit, though, which is essentially ban.
Well.
Okay.
I, I move that we place Article 15, Support for Swimming Pool, petition article on town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Four zero.
Nope. I oppose.
Oh, do you? Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Three.
Placing it?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
You can't oppose placing.
Aye.
Four zero.
Four zero to place.
Now you just tipped your hand. You don't know where you're going.
Are you sure?
So four zero to place. Now, go ahead.
We, we support Article for Swimming Pool on town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Only discussion I have on this one is it's, I want a swimming pool. There's no numbers. I feel it's an irresponsible article, and we're not giving the town the true picture. If they knew that it would cost them upwards of $10 million and 10 more staff, then maybe. So I think that there was a different way to do this than, than a petition article, maybe even a conversation on the board level. I know Joe and I sat through several conversations with a group that was trying to do exactly this over the last year and a half, two years, and there is a, a movement going on, but to ask the voters to support something with nothing attached to it seems irresponsible to me.
Thank you. Jeff?
I'll just say I was part of a, a plan to have a pool be built in Falmouth, and the money that it was going to cost was mind-blowing, so I can't support this at this point here in Harwich.
Thank you, Jeff. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Similar to, to other members, it really needs a profit and loss somehow, because, yeah, sure, we could build it, but the, the cost of operating, not just the chemicals, but the corrosive, the pipes, everything, people would have to see what it is, what it's going to cost them to build it, but more importantly, what it's going to cost to maintain it and operate it through the years, and none of that's in here.
Thank you, Don. Patrick?
Right. So this is the very, very first step. Would you like to have a pool? Yes or no? So we have not done feasibility studies. We have not gone, gotten estimates on actuality. We know that the community center was originally designed 24 years ago to support a pool. So it's before the town voters at town meeting, just to say yes or no. If the answer is yes, then we'll get numbers. Then we'll get feasibility studies. We'll get options. And what I submitted was an Olympic-sized pool. Olympic-sized pool, that I've been now corrected, is not practical. It would be a conventional 25-yard pool, not a 50-yard pool. Plus, there would be a learn-to-swim pool, a shallow pool, pool for children. There would be the lap pool for our youth for competitive swimming. There would be an aerobics pool for seniors, so they can do their exercise. So it's broader than what I presented originally in the initial petition, okay? And I'll make that correction at town meeting. So no, I don't have numbers, because I don't know if people want it. Once we have that statistic, then we can move forward.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But to Michael's point, we haven't had any discussion, if it just started organically here, that would, that would be the first logical step, because what you're not including in any of this is a discussion of, do other towns want to throw in with us? Or does the YMCA want to place a pool in this proximity where they would operate it and we would not be responsible for that? There's all kinds, I mean, because I went back to that, to those days when this thing was being discussed, and, yeah, they, they put the plumbing in, but little more than that, because there wasn't any discussion about what it would really cost us to operate it and what, as a matter of fact, through the years, I've had discussions with Chatham Selectmen about not going headlong into doing something like this in their own community center, because you have to do a pro forma on this thing. It's, it's massive. It costs, it probably going to cost more than running the community center itself. So that's what, this is too restrictive. It says at the community center. It doesn't talk about any regional cooperation, and it doesn't talk about even the possibility of the YMCA running it, which would be a logical first step. You guys want to locate something down here.
True. No. Again, I'm, you're right. Maybe we should just simply say, do Harwich residents want to swim in a pool? Yes or no? Maybe I'll, I'll make that correction at town meeting and have that vote take place, because it could be intermunicipal. I mean, Chatham's interested, Falmouth is interested, Dennis is interested, Orleans is interested, the YMCA is interested. It could also be public funded by a private nonprofit. We don't know. Okay? So, or I don't know. So, okay.
No, and I, I appreciate, you know, the intent. I, I would love a pool, and I, and I love a regional approach to the, to the idea, and I know that a lot of other towns are putting it on their warrant as well, but, you know, we had a, a woman come in a couple, I think it was two years ago, on a regional approach, and we never heard any more on that. I know that there was another person who I think took the torch from her at the rec commission meeting. I, I think the question is a valid question, because I think it serves all parts of the community, but I think we need the real information of, you know, can we do this regionally? Could we do it through a Y or, 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 as you say, a private nonprofit? But, I mean, I guess you could just change it to ask people at town meeting, do you want a pool?
That's a good suggestion. I'll, I'll just simply say that.
Just, just because I've had some experience with this. If you do private nonprofit, what ends up happening is someone like the Cape Cod Swim Club comes in, pays an exorbitant amount of money, and now the pool can't be used by the residents of the town for a lot of hours. That's my experience over the last 35 years in the business, Ahmed. And then I'll also add, which I thought was a fascinating piece of information, is in a survey that was done about 20 years ago, 15 or 20 years ago nationally, how many people walk into a health club and on a survey say they want a pool? It's like 75%. But when you aggregate all the numbers nationally on what percentage of health club users with access to a pool use a pool, it's about 1%. So even though that people will immediate, well, of course, they're going to say yes. And if financially the town can pull it off with private partnerships, you're looking at a lot of the time being taken up by a private company who's got to generate revenue. And that's a whole nother issue, as we're finding out with baseball, right? And it's not as cut and dry as do you want a pool or do you not want a pool? So, I mean, my parents have a pool. We're looking at filling it in. Because no one, no one uses it. But anyway, again, thank you for all your efforts.
Sell tickets and I'll swim there.
Well, you know what?
I'll be over.
This conversation is getting worse by the minute. Let's move it forward.
No, you know, we are a water community. That's why we're here. So being able to have access to water year-round would be phenomenal.
Yeah.
That's all.
No, and, you know, other communities do have it, and other countries have community pools as well. So I appreciate the effort, and I think that if there was any way that you could do something on a regional basis. We do, we are surrounded by water. Teaching children to swim is super important, never mind the fact that the aging population benefits wholeheartedly from aquatic exercise versus other types of exercise. So there's a lot of pros to having one, but I think we need to have that article be something real where there's other partners and.
That'll be in the next step then.
Yeah.
So.
But thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So, oh, Joe?
If I could just add to the record, as your colleague, Mr. McCaskill, mentioned before, a community pool and a regional pool was contemplated. I was tasked by the board, and I did seek the input of my colleagues. So at a meeting in, I believe it was March of 2023, I polled the other managers and administrators who were present and the proponents presented. And the question was posed, how many of you would partner with the town of Harwich to fund and maintain and operate? And to a manager or administrator, the answer was, we'll use it, but we're not going to pay for it.
Yeah. So you're out, then we don't want any part of you.
Correct. So there was, there was little appetite because we were contemplating a community compact grant which requires regionalization. So we did vet that as recently as a year ago.
No, I know. We have been having that discussion. I think it's a good discussion if it can move forward. But anyway, we've placed it. The question now is whether we're going to support it. So all in favor of supporting Article 15, we're calling it, firm support for a public access swimming pool? All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Okay. Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Patrick.
Took some time to get through all of this. But I'm really pleased that these four citizen petitions are 10, 13, 14, and 15, not 68, 69, 70, 71. So thank you very much for that as well.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Well, as a segue, Madam Chair, perhaps we're going to hear from someone that was not necessarily pleased with the draft article number, but you have lead petitioner Ed McManus here. The next one on your agenda is to hear about the Home Rule Petition on Attainable Housing, which is presently numbered as 46.
Oh.
Chair?
Michael?
I move that we recommend and place Article 46 to see if the town will vote to special legislation to amend the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw, Chapter 140, to include attainable housing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
I just think this one's an absolute no-brainer, and we've been talking about it for a long time, and we should pass it.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Ed. I really appreciate your submitting it.
Thank you, Ed.
Well, thank you for supporting. I spent a good part of the afternoon putting together, you know, the facts and figures on the problems we have with housing, especially for what's being referred to as sort of the missing middle, that there's really no issue for the middle-income working class of our communities. And, you know, when you look at in Harwich, I think today we have one, well, actually, I know of two houses on the market that are, one at, I think, what was it? 439 for a condo and $700,000 for a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and everything else is over $1 million. You know, there is obviously something wrong with the housing market. And we need to basically put as many tools in our toolbox in anticipation of what the town, the state may or may not do on a housing bond issue to be able to respond to it with using our housing trust fund, which, or our housing trust, which has, as you know, many more, a greater ability to act quickly and facilitate creation of housing. And so that's why I brought it forward.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. So we've got a motion to recommend and place and support, right?
Not recommend, just support.
And place.
And place.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize.
I'm holding my vote.
My notes, thank you. The motion was to recommend and place.
It was recommend and place, right? That's what I had. But it should, you want.
Syntax error.
Yeah. What I, what I said was, you guys obviously all. You didn't hear me.
I wrote it down. You said recommend and place.
Let's roll the tape back.
Well, it is recommend and place.
Okay.
Right?
It's.
We don't have to accept it. So I think I read it right, correct?
Correct. There is the.
Just wondering why there's no support.
I thought he was trying to throw me off.
I, I got.
Recommend and support is the same thing.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
It was, except recommend and place were the three.
I vote with Michael.
You said recommend and place.
Correct. You would not do the except, but you said recommend, not support.
Yeah, he did.
Because that's what the motion says in the fact.
Correct. So the motion before you, if I may, Madam Chair, as I understand it, was moved and seconded at 8:34 PM, was to recommend and place what is known as Article 46 under the warrant.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we support.
I support it, too.
And support.
I move that we support.
Oh, second for the sake of belt and suspenders.
It is the same thing.
It is the same.
All right. All in favor of supporting?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. You've got it all, every word you could possibly have.
I would just ask and go back to all of the operating budget ones we did. We placed, recommended, and except, recommend, and place. So are we going to be asked later on to come back and support all those articles?
So recommendation has always meant that you recommend the adoption of the article.
In other words, support it.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And that was a four-zero vote, correct?
And just to be clear, the other votes, because I've written them down, too, were support, place and support. But we deviated with recommended, so we're going back to saying all of the above.
I appreciate this deep dive into the source.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the vote was four-zero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, next on your agenda is somewhat intricate. So these are the articles that now impact upon the capital outlay plan, which is a fairly straightforward article, which currently is represented as Article 16. So that's the standard language wherein. So standard, I can't find. For the town to adopt the five-year capital plan, however, the article should read for fiscal year 2025 through '29. And then it is laid out in what has always been Appendix C. So Article 16 has not yet been accepted, recommended, or placed. If you were to do that tonight, you then want to have a conversation about the following articles, as you can see. A potential article that talks about funding the capital plan items for fiscal year '25 and free cash, funding some of them from other sources. The raise and appropriate is no longer necessary, given the presentation earlier by Montemoy. So that article will be removed and renumbered, because then it would be water retained earnings and wastewater retained earnings. So I do have material to present to the board tonight. I also know that we have one of two petitioners for additional capital items. This is meant to just expedite discussion. We'll obviously do the 11 by 17s, but.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, and to the members first to start out, so what you see on the 11, excuse me, by the legal size page is essentially, and I can qualify that in a moment, essentially what you reviewed on December 4th, 2023 jointly with the Finance Committee, as was presented by the Capital Outlay Committee and me as town administrator. I say essentially because I want to draw your attention to the middle of the page under Information Technology, where originally the ask was $11,136,863, the delta of $50,000, is because the Information Technology Electronic Records Content Management was to be fully funded by a community compact IT grant, which it was. The amount offered was 150, so the proponents are asking for $150,000 to be funded through that grant. So that's the first change. That if you look on the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper in the very top, you can see that the FY '25 capital budget is $11,86,863 because of that change from $200,000 to $150,000.
Did you have a question?
No.
So then, if I may, the question now comes to, you know, to recommend and, or to adopt a capital plan for five years, which is what Article 16 is meant to capture, and then the following articles would be the funding mechanisms for all of the projects contemplated in fiscal year '25. Now, in years past, we've relied upon free cash substantially to fund much of what we do for capital outlay. We know, however, that this year, that the funds available were just over $2.9 million. And so you can see on the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet, possible funding sources, I'm recommending relying upon just under $2.9 million. So there's any number of ways that I could go through this, the following articles, which are draft articles 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21. You also have an application from the Fire Department that they mentioned during their enhancement of service discussion at the last meeting, I believe. And I would also make you aware that the Director of Natural Resources requested after the plan had already been adopted by capital outlay. So there's two other items to consider. Obviously, quite a bit of moving parts related to capital plan. However, I remain convinced that I can walk you through everything if you'd like.
Can I just go back to the one question on the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven where you noted the IT request changed from $200,000 to $150,000?
Correct.
But then on the 11 by 17, am I missing it? Because it looks like 250.
Right below that should be 150.
Oh, is that 150? All right, I see it.
Yeah, because there are two items being funded for Information Technologies. It's the second one that says Electronic Records/Content Management.
Sorry, I missed that.
Well, it's easy to miss. It's a small document.
I can hardly see.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Joe, the capital outlay budget FY 2025, the first page on, in our packet, still has facility maintenance at 1.515. Is this not germane to the conversation tonight in our packet? Because if I remember right, last week we talked about, if I remember right, Mr. McCaskill moving that. Or not calling it facility maintenance.
In your packet, if I may, I believe you have a title page that says Capital Outlay Plan and Budget.
Correct.
And then you have the draft article, which again has an error.
Correct.
And then you have my memorandum going back to March 8. That is now updated because originally it contemplated all of those funding sources to fund everything in the draft plan.
Right.
The 1.51 million is being contemplated under a separate warrant article and is not being contemplated based on our discussion on March 8.
So if this, if.
So it's an old document.
It's an old document. Is there an updated?
What I've handed out this evening is the latest update.
That's the latest update.
Correct.
Thank you.
How do you want to, go ahead?
I would just ask, Joe, I mean, we have these late submissions or submissions after the fact, and the fact that we only have $2.9 million to work with on free cash, do you have suggestions on where we're going to find this money?
I will. I think as we progress through this article, these handouts, and the other articles.
Okay.
But they're merely suggestions at this point.
So the first ask tonight is to approve the capital plan with the changes for an article? Adopt the capital plan?
No.
Okay.
Not as a first ask. Because I think you'd want to have conversations with the applicant, and I can present what the other applicant has asked for. So before you go any further, Article 16 is meant to cover fiscal year 2025 to '29. '25 has changes. Those will be reflected in the Appendix C for Article 16 and would be reflected in the funding articles that come to follow. So what I handed you out tonight is an updated fiscal year '25 to '29 draft capital outlay plan. No other numbers have changed other than in fiscal year '25 since you discussed this back on December 4th. Then you have the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven documents that is titled Possible Funding Sources for Fiscal Year 2025 Capital Plan. Now, what I've identified are other sources on the spreadsheet that are different from the articles. Then there is free cash. Then there was raise and appropriate. That's no longer needed based on what we heard from Mr. McMillan regarding Article Five of the Montemoy budget. So their $120,000 for the Harwich Elementary School roof units was already baked into their capital line. So really, what we're confronted with is trying to balance the remainder of just under $11 million, where we essentially have between other sources and free cash, just over $4 million available. So to that end, and I tried to do it in order, I would show you first what was referred to, and I keep missing that error. I don't think there was ever a Channel 8, but we now know it to be the Harwich Channel on the draft plan. And this, of course, now is the legal size one. So the Harwich Channel is looking for equipment upgrades in the amount of $47,863, and that is recommended because it can be fully funded through the existing cable fund. Then we drop down to facilities maintenance. And first, I would identify that of the five projects that are listed there, I'd ask you to draw your attention to the last one listed, facilities maintenance, 715 Route 28 Harbor Complex, $200,000. As you know from the earlier discussions, that's for a whole building generator, and that can be funded relying upon, I believe, and I'd look to the finance director to generally say, okay, from the Waterways Improvement Fund. I know there are two funds related to Harbor.
Yeah, we're using it for operating budgets. And we can, I believe that there'll be funds available at the time when we go.
The remaining items for facilities will come later in the spreadsheet that says possible funding sources. Then you drop down on the capital plan itself to Harbor Master. There's only one project. It's 40,000 for the Herring River Ramp Replacement. And I would recommend either the Waterways Improvement Fund, which I just mentioned earlier, or another harbor-related fund. What I'm not recommending is that it be funded by free cash. And that's the point I'm trying to make with these other sources. I mentioned the Community Compact IT Grant, 150,000 to cover the 150,000 request. Then there are other sources, specifically water retained earnings. I believe you saw that confirmed in the Superintendent's email. The Water Department has vehicle replacements at 270,000, equipment replacements at 232,000, and well rehabilitation project at 150,000. That entire 652,000 can come from the Water Department's retained earnings so-called. And then last, you see under the other sources, 75,000 for the wastewater department collection system improvements. Those projects can be funded by those other sources, I believe. When you then go back to facilities maintenance, there will be a discussion about the 295,000 for the community center, the 52,000 for the public safety complex on Sisson Road, and the 650,000 for the 204 Sisson Road or the old middle school Cultural Affairs Building. What is omitted is the 1.16 million for Brooks Academy renovations. So those three projects for free cash for facilities maintenance come to 997,000. Then we go to the next department, which is the Fire Department. Ambulances, 520,000, and vehicles, 90,000. I did not yet incorporate the new requests so-called. That 610,000 would be funded through free cash. The other project for investment, for Information Technologies, this is the town's ongoing annual commitment to technology reinvestment, 250,000 coming from free cash. Then you move down the list, and you see Police Department. Police Cruiser Replacements, 219,000, and 51,000 for equipment replacements. So the total of 270,000 from free cash would pay for the Police Department capital requests in fiscal year 25. And then last for free cash is the line under Public Works, 765,000 for vehicle replacements, which are a number of departments, including Public Works, and that funds the entire line. If you're still looking at the possible funding sources document that I handed out this evening, you'll see the next line talks about 120,000 from the regional system. We're no longer talking about that, and I will be removing that article that is in the capital plan section. So our new total with me doing math shorthand, which is frightening for all, should be 4,056,863, because I've removed the 120,000 from the raise and appropriate. So then we have four projects left. The first is that Brooks Academy Museum Renovations Project for 1.16 million. Then there were the ones that we talked about on March 8th, 2.5 million for Gulf irrigation update, 1.5 million for the Public Works Department on Road Maintenance, and the 1.75 million for Water Department, Paint Pleasant Avenue Water Tank. Those have been deferred or are planning to be deferred. If you agreed with that, that would have me adjust, barring any other changes, the fiscal year 25 plan to remove those four projects from the plan. If we were to bring those projects back at a special town meeting in the fall, it would require a two-thirds majority vote to add them to the existing fiscal 25 plan. Hope that made sense.
Great sense, thank you. Given that the Gulf and the Water Department are going to fund out of internal funds, water being an enterprise fund, why wouldn't we go forward with those two? And Gulf, the irrigation's going to be paid for out of their internal fund. Why wouldn't we go forward with those?
So my understanding is that there were also other articles that had to be created for debt exclusions, for the debt that was going to be assumed by that.
Okay. I'm fine with waiting, I'm just asking.
And the debt service for Gulf would be paid through their fund.
It would.
Year over year, but we'd still need authorization to borrow the 2.5, and we would want to contemplate a debt exclusion.
Okay.
That's the same for the Public Works, for the, what would be using Chapter 90 funds. If the town was going to augment that, that was we've done in years past. And then the same thing for the Water Department. They were hoping to use rates, but they don't have rates sufficient to cover the debt service. They would be looking to do a borrowing.
Yes. They voted to split it. They were going to use the retained earnings and debt service for the painting of the tank.
I'm good with the recommendation.
Jeff, do you have any comments? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Especially given the two-thirds vote comment, I'd like to get this out there. So the Brooks Academy renovations, as the building sits right now, is it fully capable of being used? And this is just to complete some of the work that was being done? Is it fully open, fully available for them to utilize?
I don't know that I could say fully. I believe a portion of the 1.16 million is to install a lift that would allow people to access the basement. So that's what would be held off.
So you really couldn't use the basement right now?
I don't believe we would meet all the accessibility requirements.
Okay, that's why I wanted to get it out there, because it's not something that could be indefinitely deferred.
And just to comment, Don, part of our conversation last week, and it would be nice to know what's left in articles that currently exist as we progress here, but they were trying to, and in their explanation, move out years up. So they were trying to change the capital plan and get it all done now rather than wait the three or four years. But it would be good to know where we stand and what we have left.
Yeah, well, that was kind of the question, is the numbers are one thing, but where's it at in terms of it being utilized right now as a real building?
Oh.
Excuse me, pause the action.
Took a break.
So, Member of Council, to your point, I don't want to exclude, you know, any members. We could certainly repeat it. I did reach out to all the department heads about capital articles to see if there were any balances that could be re-appropriated for other purposes, and there are two. There's one from the Fire Department, which is sizable, it's 122,280. There was another one for a parking lot project for, that was 37,450. Those two articles could be included in a funding source. They won't, you know, obviously cover, they may not cover the whole project, but it is an additional 159,000, almost 160,000, which, you know, and if we choose to leave them in place, that money doesn't go away. Could be, you know, maybe in a subsequent year, you know, moved to use them.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Chair. Yeah, just to be clear, because in the age of digital devices, you can get information pretty quick. So let me roll back to the Brooks Academy again. By usable, I also mean legally. Does that have a certificate of occupancy right now?
I don't know. I'd have to check with the Facilities Maintenance Manager.
Okay. Because that's real important. I don't care what else is not done, but if we don't have an OC on the thing, then you really can't legally use it.
You didn't miss much. We voted it all already.
Oh, excellent. I'm good with that.
What day is it?
Yeah, I don't even know.
Yeah, it's Thursday now.
I think where we left off was Joe is now going to make a recommendation or explain the new requests, right? Done with this document?
Correct. So we are joined this evening by my colleague in government who can speak better than I. It is an Assistance to Firefighters Grant for EKG Monitors. And if I may, my setup would be, there's a lot of complexity to this, and there's a repurposing, but given that the dollar amount in the end is going to be less than 50,000, we may be able to do an article that re-appropriates, separate from capital. We may be able to put it into the operating budget under expenses and perhaps fund it through another article. However, having said that, you might want to recognize our Fire Chief. And the Deputy. Sorry, Deb, I tried.
In the name of brevity.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go have me at re-appropriating.
Right, 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 right.
A hundred percent, this is, we failed to anticipate the grant period opening up for FY25. There's 22,000, give or take, sitting in an article from the Mini Pumper when we went for a grant, and we'd just like to reappropriate about 13,000.
13,863.
To replace all the cardiac monitors in the A belt. So that's what we defibrillate people with, monitor the harbor and the 12 LED EKGs. Ours are going on 15 years old. They're due to be replaced. It's a high priority item in the grant program, so we stand a really good chance of getting it. And it's just a matter of whether we can reappropriate that money and make it work.
If I may, for the record, through you, Madam Chair, to the Chief. So you make reference to the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, Article 28. Was that a standalone article?
It was.
It was.
Okay. So then the request would be to reappropriate the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, Article 28, to fund this purpose.
So moved.
Second. So the question then that the Board might want to answer is, how would you like us to accomplish that? Meaning, I can envision under Article 4 that the motion would talk about all of the sources, so to raise and appropriate and transfer from, you know, yada, 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 and transfer from an article. So that way, we could add the 13863 and change to the expense line of the operating budget, but that would require you to reconsider the operating budget.
We haven't voted the operating budget yet.
Ah, thank you very much. So you could do it that way. We have article space available where you could use present Article 19, which is no longer needed for raise and appropriate, to reappropriate the capital item so-called.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can I just, we talked about it at lunch today, and not knowing if you're going to get a grant per se, is, my thought was to reappropriate that 225 to be a matching grant fund for the benefit of the Fire Department. So if for something happens, those funds are available, and then you could immediately appropriate from them when you get the grant.
That's what my motion was.
Joe?
I don't know what's referred to by 225.
I'm sorry, 22,500.
It's the whole article.
It's the whole article balance? So you.
The original article is 22,500.
Sorry, I'm a number person. It's the default.
And I'm not, so we've established that over the past couple of weeks.
Again, you could rely upon Article 17 as a standalone article to accomplish this.
Yeah.
It's within the capital articles. It ties back to last year's capital article. It ties to what they've asked for to be considered as capital. Once you're done with the Fire Department, I think I should then mention the other capital item that I do not have a funding source for yet.
So I, yeah, go ahead.
I think this is such an extremely important thing, and if they're 15 years old, it's time to replace them, so.
Am I right at 15?
It could be 12, I'll be all right with it still.
They're purchased in 2014, so we're about 10.
10. But they're obsolete, so no more firmware upgrades.
Yeah, in order to kind of move this thing along, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't have to be in the article. It could be the motion that identifies the funding source.
Correct. It could be a motion under Article 4 or any other.
So we can go ahead with supporting the article with the notion that we're going to make a motion that will pull the money from where we need to.
But defer to Finance and the Town Administrator?
Yeah.
With the understanding that we support it?
Yep.
Right, so.
Yep. Could we just get that as a vote?
Yes, so like.
That's what I was hoping you were going to do.
So we know we're going to come up with an article, right? We're going to take the money from the other article, reappropriate it for this purpose.
And we're going to stick it somewhere.
We're going to stick it somewhere, so we're going to do, well, I know we technically don't have it in front of us. Can we place it, vote to place, and support?
Was that 19? My recommendation this evening would be that you vote to direct Finance Director and Town Administrator to account for the request.
All right, so so moved, right. So who seconded?
So seconded. Who moves? Well, you guys both moved it.
He seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
4-0.
So I'm sorry to clarify, so it's going to be part of the operating budget?
So we're going to talk about that offline.
Okay.
If I heard that correctly.
Yes.
You get to go home.
You did. Sorry to keep you so long.
Thank you.
Think of us on the way home.
Thanks, gentlemen.
So then the other request, again, was, came in from the Director of Natural Resources. And it is a legitimate request insofar as the prior Director of Natural Resources was able to rely upon a vehicle provided by the town and the execution of his job responsibilities and duties. However, when Mr. Yanuzzi started, it was discovered that the vehicle is no longer roadworthy. I want to make it clear that I absolutely support the department head, known as the Director of Natural Resources, having a vehicle immediately. And rather than add to the capital plan, if the Board so directed me, we could, we, me as Finance Director, good Lord, sorry, it's late. Me as Town Administrator could work with the Finance Director, but also other departments, to reallocate. I think it's important for us to provide to our department heads all of the tools that they need, including vehicles, and there are vehicles available that could be reassigned. Otherwise, I don't have 65,000 yet to buy that truck, and it wouldn't be until July 1.
Michael?
And I would agree that he needs the truck. And I would also agree that, I can't remember a budget cycle, other than last year, we didn't ask department heads to reconsider some of the requests for vehicles. So Water Department's buying a bunch, DPW's buying a bunch, police are getting three new cruisers, and the word vehicles plural is being used in the fire budget. So, Joe, I would support you reallocating, or at least having a conversation with other department heads, is there one you couldn't use this year? But make good sense of that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, whatever way you can, I don't have the word.
So, Madam Chair, unless there was objection, I thought what I heard was that I've been directed to reallocate resources for the benefit of our Natural Resources Director, and that there's no need for this to come before the capital plan.
That's right. We don't need a vote, right?
He can't pedal fast enough to the herring rungs.
Oh, man.
So then, Madam Chair, members of the Board, if I could, what you have in your packet and next on your list is Draft Article 17. And this would be to fund Capital LA Projects for fiscal year 25 from the sources listed there. So the sources listed in this article are the 47,863 from the cable fund, the 40,000 for Waterways for the Herring River Ramp, 200,000. the $40,000 for waterways for the Herring River ramp, $200,000 from waterways, or some other fund. Kathleen, what's the other harbor fund?
There is a waterways and, I'm sorry. There's a harbor improvement fund and a waterways fund.
So thank you. I think it's the harbor improvement fund would be the other fund.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's enough money for that extra 200 that wasn't.
And then again, under that article, Article 17, it's also the Community Compact IT Grant. So generally speaking, I do recommend that this be accepted, recommended and placed. Unless there's a question on the funding sources.
I, I, I don't mind making a motion.
I thought you.
Is it as simple as?
Excuse me, checking on that.
I just want to make sure you have enough money for that extra 200. I'm sorry, I don't mean to hold up the door.
Well, we could go on to another one, as always. Do you want to jump to the other one, Joe? For, well, Kathleen?
So, yeah, well, we're looking at that. So Article 18 then would be the items listed under the possible funding sources handout that I gave you this evening. It would total 289, 2,890, good lord.
It's not just.
Matt, we're going to take this out in post-production.
I like the first number.
Two million eight hundred ninety-two thousand dollars to fund the three facilities maintenance projects listed, the ambulances and vehicles, the information technology reinvestment, the cruisers, the equipments, and the public work vehicles.
Okay. Am I going to motion?
I'm going to so moved that with the addition of to accept, recommend and place as read.
Thank you.
Second. You sure you want to say recommend?
I sure do, because that's what it says on the paper.
So.
I don't know where I came up with support.
It was moved and seconded, I believe?
Yes.
Yep.
All, and all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I was going to say discuss.
Thank you. Draft Article 19 is no longer needed for the purpose listed there. I would ask you to just keep the numbering in place right now. We'll move past that one. So then Article 20.
Didn't we already take 19 out of commission?
Yes.
Say again?
We've already taken that for another initiative earlier, so it has, Article 19 still has to exist as 19, but for a different article.
Which we haven't put there yet.
Right. That's a placeholder, correct?
Placeholder, yeah.
Okay, keep, let's keep going.
So Articles 20 and 21. Matt, do we have somebody on that?
No, I just.
That was Julie who butted the mic. Smashed her face into the mic.
So, sorry, Madam Chair, I could, I could try something real quick. And that would be that the board vote to renumber Article 20 to be Article 19.
So moved.
Except, replace.
Sorry.
Except, recommend and place.
Yes.
And renumber.
And what's the amount?
For the amount of $652,000 to be funded by Water Department retained earnings.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No, hold on. If we do this, we're starting to change more than one article number. I thought we were just going to reserve 19 for 19 and leave the structure of the rest of it intact. Now you're going to be doing more than one thing.
So I have a plan.
So you're good?
That the numbering would be good, if you can.
All right.
I never want to say as a government official. Trust me.
Trust me.
Trust.
We're trusting you.
But I believe it was moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you. And that.
Did you not vote? Wait.
Did not vote.
Oh, so you're not voting for that?
I'm not going to vote for that.
Because of the numbering?
Yep.
Oh, my god. All right, so three.
Three, one.
One. Okay, so that was 19.
And then that the article known as Article 21 be renumbered to be Article 20. Accepted, recommended and placed.
I don't want to say I told you so.
I just want to clarify something here. Because the renumbering makes sense to me, but if that's going to cause you to not vote for everything, that doesn't make sense.
It just doesn't make sense that we've got a packet that has numbers and we're going to change a lot of numbers instead of just the one.
Maybe he could give us, if I may, Madam Chair, give us the concept of where this is going to end.
You're going to change two numbers and you're about to do the second one.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Okay, so, so go ahead, Joe. Sorry to interrupt you.
For that article, in the packet, Article 21, be renumbered to be Article 20, and then be accepted, recommended and placed.
In the amount of?
Thank you, in the amount of $75,000 to be taken from the wastewater retained earnings, and there's a scrivener's error to that effect. So it says capital LA projects funded from, it should read wastewater retained earnings.
Okay.
I so moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I'll vote for it to the extent that that's the, the end. We're not going to do any more of these.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
And on that one, could you just remind me who moved and seconded?
Moved, second.
Thank you.
We all voted four zip.
Four zero.
Four zip.
So for those following along at home, you should have changed the channel. So what we now have for new Article 21 is for the benefit of two gentlemen waiting patiently in the audience. Because I omitted, and of course I can't find it, so I will continue to search. While, Madam Chair, you might wish to recognize the gentlemen that represent the Harwich Conservation Trust. To play along, come up and I can explain my actions.
Come on up, gentlemen. I don't know that you really want to talk to us tonight, but.
Thank you.
All right, sorry.
We didn't expect you to be at a sleepover.
I didn't go back, yeah. I got that. Oh, I thought he was leaving.
In Chicago.
I think they're keeping the clock like that.
In Chicago.
The clock.
But it makes me feel good.
I know, till you know it's not.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your indulgence on all that. So very quickly, you do not have sufficient notice. But for numbering purposes and the fact that they're here, I thought we should take advantage of the fact that Article 21 will be related to what Mr. Locke is about to mention, and I wholeheartedly support and endorse. Then you'll see on your list that there was a placeholder article that I don't have yet for Article 22. So this is a natural place, I think, to include this article because it's going to follow separately and distinctly from the community preservation articles. The reason why it's not presented to you is I mistook this as a community preservation article. So what Mike and Tom are going to speak to this evening is an article seeking a conservation restriction. We have all of the language. Council has viewed it, and it will come back to you in proper form and notice to be accepted into the war, formally as the new Article 21. But I thought it might be helpful for Michael to just walk you through briefly what it's asking.
Right, thank you. Good evening, Michael.
Thank you. Good evening. Michael Locke, Executive Director of the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust. Thank you, Joe, for the introduction to this concept. With me here tonight is Tom Evans, President of the Board of Trustees. Thank you, Tom, for being here. So by way of introduction to this concept, this is a new and creative way to bring more funding to the town of Harwich, principally through the purchase of a conservation restriction by the town of Harwich to be held by the Conservation Commission on a property located at address 1039 Route 28. About 9.6 acres on the south side of 28 along Red River, about 780 feet of streamside habitat along Red River flows down to the sound next to the town's most popular beach. The Harwich Conservation Trust partnered with a nonprofit called the Compacted Conservation Trust, which it often does in these efforts to preserve priority lands for conservation purposes. In this case, what we would be seeking to do is to access the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program. Eligible recipients for those state grant funds are municipalities. So the idea would be that the town would be the applicant to the municipal vulnerability preparedness or MVP grant program to receive funds from the state for purchase of a conservation restriction on land to be owned by Harwich Conservation Trust. There would be no cost to the town. So that's the concept summary.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Yep.
What do we need for a motion on this, or do you just need consensus to bring it back?
I think you make a motion if it isn't on the agenda, so.
Okay, I wholeheartedly support this.
So with the, so with this MVP, we'll do an article. You submit through, do you do it through the trust or through the compact? How do you?
Yeah, we'll work with the town to prepare the grant application. Again, no cost to the town. The town will be the grant applicant.
Okay.
And we would move from there, you know, contingent on the grant application being approved by the state. Then we would have had the town meeting article in place, assuming it's voted positively in May, which is required by the MVP grant program.
Okay.
Do we get this on the agenda for next week?
Yeah, we'll put this on for next week and then, great, so, because we can't really take the action tonight.
Great, thank you.
Is this what's anticipated to be Article 21, Harwich Conservation Trust?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's great.
Fantastic work, amazing.
Great, and look forward to answering any other questions next week.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, God, for seeing to introduce.
Patience, give me my paper. Thanks, thanks. We'll try to get you out of here next week a little over. Thank you for taking this.
Don't worry, it's only 8:25.
Until you get to your car.
Yeah, till you look at your watch.
May I ask a question? I'll keep it brief. Was it Article 19, Don, that you voted no on because we were changing the numbering around?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate if I made a reconsideration, or do we even have to do that? Because Don only voted no because of the, the.
It was going to get confusing how many different articles we were going to move around.
I understand why you did it. I just think there's a certain benefit to being in harmony on as many as we can be in harmony on for town meetings. So a four to oh vote stops somebody from saying, what was the minority vote for? Or was your vote just yes?
I would vote, yeah, I would vote yes if it even just said reserved, just as long as they kept the structure that we walked in.
I understand why you did it. I'm not saying, I'm just saying if we could go back while we're right here and get a four to oh vote, I think it makes sense. Makes sense to you, Don, or no?
Yeah.
So I would do a motion to reconsider Article 19, capital funding raise and appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I would put the same.
Four zero on reconsideration?
I didn't hear you say aye.
I didn't say anything because I wasn't on the positive side of the original.
So.
Vote. But now that, now that it's opened up and it did pass, he's going to make another follow-on motion.
I am going to make a follow-up motion. So on that one, just for recording that, it's three zero one you abstained. So on the re, on the.
Can I just offer parliamentary?
Go ahead.
Yes.
The motion was made by the prevailing side.
Yep.
Which was appropriate. Any member can vote to adopt.
I get that. It's still three zero one.
Thank you.
And then I would put the same motion on the floor. Capital funding raise and appropriate, and that was in the amount of what, Joe?
652,000.
652,000.
Please say second, Jen.
Second, sorry.
Moved and seconded.
It was for effect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. I think, I think it's important.
Madam Chair, thank you. And moving back to Articles 17.
I hope we're not going backwards here.
So you, we have confirmed the funding sources.
Okay.
So Article 17, as presented in your packet, is confirmed and recommended. So it is 1,89,863,000 from Cable Fund, Waterways Fund, excuse me, Waterways Improvement Fund, and the Community Compact IT Grant as listed.
So I move that we accept, recommend and place with the, as an addition.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that amount is 1,89,863 total.
Correct.
Madam Chair, if I may, did we actually take an action on adopt the capital plan? I didn't make a note on that. I don't.
No, because we were waiting to see what we were gonna.
It had to be built up first.
Prove.
Correct. So what, what I'd like to do is present a clean, correct Article 16 next week.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to 20.
Well, if I could, before you go there. So then on your agenda, the next one is a placeholder article appropriating funds from the sale of 276 Queen Anne Road. I was hoping to have that from council. I do not yet. I would ask you to hold on any action on that proposed document.
You don't want a motion to place it?
Correct, not as, that's okay. And then the correct 2023 Annual Town Meeting, Article 24. I have the language. I have not had that confirmed by council yet. And then you have proposed articles that go from Article numbers 24 through 30, excuse me, 24 through 36. I endeavored today to convene a meeting of Finance Administration, Legal, Community Preservation Committee. Was I able to do so to just confirm all these? That meeting is confirmed for tomorrow morning. I would ask that you hold on all of those CPC articles until we know that Community Preservation Committee and Legal are comfortable with the language.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Joe, housekeeping, could you just give me a understanding on housekeeping? Number 28.
Oh, sorry, that's, yeah, that's what they use as a concept. It's how they fund the buckets, so to speak.
Understood, thank you.
Is my understanding.
That's all, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll hold those till after your confirmation.
So those will come back with the other articles next week for certain. I would then draw your attention. We do not yet have the repurposed 2013 ATM as requested by the library trustees. That is still with council. And I am still waiting on a, the placeholder for what I understand is a corrective article regarding wastewater. Articles 39, 40, 41 and 42, you've already placed, and you've voted to adopt all of those.
About support.
Just recommend.
Have we voted to recommend yet?
I think it was recorded as such.
I have no problem putting a motion out to do it twice if.
So the language in the warrant articles is to accept and adopt. So that in the instance of Article 39, there was three votes in favor and one vote opposed to accept and adopt. So again, accept and adopt has been used unilaterally. I'm very comfortable with your ARP tonight.
Okay.
Those are all in. Draft Article 43 amendment. Draft article forty-three, amendment to the general bylaws. That relates to the Board of Health. There are two minor changes that need to be added, but council has not provided that yet. And then chapter two seventy-one, still waiting for council. What council did provide, and I believe you have a version. What article forty-five gets to is one article accounting for twelve distinct changes to the Harwich Charter. And as I understand it from conversations in the community today, and I believe an email that was received by certain parties from the Chair of the Bylaw Charter Review, that there is a desire to strike item number six, which presently reads as chapter four, Town Administrator, Section Three Duties. And what that was contemplating is changing the water department to a water wastewater department.
That's article forty-five you're speaking of? Sorry, Joe.
Correct.
Would it be appropriate for someone to make a motion to reconsider that and then make a motion that doesn't include that?
So it would not be reconsider. What the board did is gave me direction in creating three standalone articles. So you've never accepted, placed or anything. So now what I would recommend is draft article forty-five, that if you vote, vote your ARP, so to speak, but you do so by striking number six and renumbering.
Is that what the bylaw committee wants to do?
Yes. I got an email. Linda sent it. So meaning that we would just strike for this proposed amendments under the charter, strike four, three, four dash three dash two dash I and accept as presented?
So specifically, item, um, item number six, which is related to four dash three dash two dash, sorry, four dash three dash two I. The request was to remove that section altogether, so you'd go from twelve to eleven and you'd be renumbering. So again, my recommendation would be for you to vote to accept, recommend, place and strike and renumber.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second. So moved.
Any?
The only conversation is, and to Don's question, it was actually voted by the water commissioners and then recommended that they send it to us. They want to understand more about what the wastewater department is and structure before they put their name on this and make other changes.
The only reason I asked is with.
So they did, they voted it and went to Charter by law and to attorney, attorney handle.
I hear we got another town meeting coming up shortly.
You have a motion.
Yes.
You do not have a second.
I seconded it.
No, he did.
He did. Don seconded.
Apologize.
Despite the fact it's changing numbers again.
Don was a machine, seconded it.
So any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Four zero, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Section D, these are, well, article one, town offices, officers and committees. Article two, reports of officers and committees. Article three, elected officials' salaries. Article twelve, lease purchase agreements.
Paying us by the hour.
Article forty-seven, defray library expenses. Article forty-eight, promote the town of Harwich. And article fifty, herring fisheries. You voted to place all those. You would now be asked to accept and recommend.
I move that we accept and recommend as read.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four zero.
Thank you. And then the last one is just confirming that you've already done the articles that are listed there. So you have already accepted and, excuse me, placed and adopted was your original actions on article eleven, Cape Cod Media Center. As I mentioned before, article thirty-nine by a three to one vote on the revolving fund authorizations. Articles forty, forty-one and forty-two by four zero votes. And article forty-nine regarding the supplement cultural council. So that mercifully concludes your discussion this evening on the two thousand twenty-four. Nope. I apologize, Madam Chair. I will yield the floor.
Sharon Fleeger, and I will try to make this short and sweet. I just have a question. The article that we were supposed to have for the money coming from wastewater to be used to help support.
SAP.
SAP.
What is it?
Sewer assistance program.
Oh, go ahead.
Sewer assistance program, the SAP.
Yes. All right. So maybe I missed it. Was there an article for that?
No, we're going to have that conversation Monday. We have a couple more, too. We have electronic voting. That one's coming in.
I was trying to follow with all the wastewater. Sorry, wasn't.
And if I may, there was a vote taken by the water commissioners to appropriate that money.
Okay.
So that part's already been done.
All right. All right. So then you guys will, all right. I just, I didn't know if I missed it.
No, you didn't miss it.
And I didn't want to forget it and I won't be here. You're lucky next week.
But thank you for bringing our attention to that. Oh. Poor business.
Madam Chair, members of the board, if I could.
Yep.
I'd like to defer to the Finance Director and I'm going to take a step if I could.
Sure.
It's about inserts in the tax bill.
Right. Oh. Yeah. So we have, you know, the discussion and possible vote on potential municipal tax bill inserts per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty, Section three A. So Kathleen, I'll hand that over to you.
Madam Chair, I apologize for the delay. There was a lot of moving parts. We didn't know who the printer was going to be in order for the insert and we haven't actually mailed out the Monomoy collect size bills yet. So we did determine who would be able to do the billing and we reached out to them. And I submitted what was previously proposed in December. And it's, so it's ten cents each insert. So there are one, fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven tax bills that we will be sending over for mailing. So the total cost to include those inserts would be one thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-eight and seventy cents. If the numbers change, it would be, you know, according to the, the ten cent each, you know, either up or down. So it will delay the mailing about a week because they have to create them. But that's how, that's the cost and the process to include those mailings.
Okay. And that's not going to, I mean, a week, but it's not going to impact collections, et cetera. Right?
No.
I move that we accept the municipal tax bill insert per, per to Mass. General Law, Chapter sixty, Section three A as presented by our Finance Director.
Second.
Moved in second.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. The only issue is we may not have a full funding source for this because of the costs of all the mailings that we're doing now. And we're having some other issues with mailing now real estate tax bills as demands rather than going directly to tax title. So I didn't know if the board had any preference if there would be other, another funding source besides the treasurer's budget.
Finance committee.
We could use FinCom.
Yeah. Michael.
First, I would, I would ask if we even have to make a motion because we already did this and said do it.
Yeah, we did.
So I'm not sure we need a motion on this. And then I would say take it out of engineering.
Engineering.
Well, that was actually never voted on in the December fourth meeting.
I was going to say, we didn't vote it because we needed more information and, yeah. So we do need to vote it.
If he just changes his motion to.
So, so you moved it.
Yeah, but if you, I did. But if he just changed the motion to contingent upon finding inappropriate funding.
That's what I said. That's what I thought you said. And that's what I seconded.
All right.
That does it.
I mean, I, I didn't, I don't want to take someone else's money. I didn't know if you had it in the.
Well, no. I'm sure we have money. So it's moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And just, there is a, we could go to the Finance Committee if we have to for that.
Yeah.
If we can't find it online, we could go to Finance Committee and ask for it.
Or Don writes checks sometimes.
Only what Michael doesn't do himself.
Best zeros than what we need.
Not quite advertising, but it's.
It's a zero or two. What's the, what's the difference?
It's kind of advertising.
So yes, Madam Chair, I'd love to give the TA's report. The only TA report will be that, I'm holding off on TA's report other than to say, there's a signature file going around. We'd love to have you sign it. And just a reminder for everybody, the Finance Committee is holding their charter required public hearing this Thursday. I've already forgotten the date. March twenty-first.
Yeah.
At six fifteen PM. Again, they'll be at Thursday, March twenty-first, six fifteen PM, small conference room at Town Hall, but also available on go-to-meeting.
And they will have all of our materials voted tonight.
Correct. I will be sending all of that over to the Chairman of the Finance Committee tomorrow morning.
Great. Thank you.
Or this morning, whichever is true.
Selectman's report. Don?
Do it in thirty seconds. Oh, is that the Monomoy Regional School production of Beauty and the Beast? There were some unbelievable, just outstanding performances there. If you missed it, I'm sorry, but it was great. Secondly, just for the board to know, I'm sitting in on a Zoom call on Friday that relates to the, the clean waters, change in the formula for allocation. I'll let you know how that goes, but I did forward you the eligibility outcome emails. So it's not to be discussed, it's just so you have that information. I'll let you know how the, the bylaws changed to reallocate money to the towns.
Great.
Thank you.
I think everybody should sit down. I have a lot to say. I'll start by saying it would be wonderful, Joe, if, and I reached out to Natasha today about getting office hours somehow on the website, whether it be by way of the calendar or something, so that when we announce office hours, it's actually memorialized on our website so people can go find it. And that's all I have.
Michael?
I have nothing.
I just want to congratulate Kevin Consign and all the plunges.
Plungee.